I officially call it to order because it would help with the microphone. And we're going to cover tabs one to seven this afternoon, and then we'll cover the remaining tabs tomorrow night at the seven o'clock meeting. This work session will be no motions, no votes, and we'll only be considering information as it is presented. I'd like to just do a small administrative change. I'd like to move the presenter from tab five up first and from the Cobb Collaborative. We could do that. So go to tab five first. Then we have two items. Mr. Volkman, I believe you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I just want to, for the item number one, I want to introduce Karen Carter, the Executive Director of the Cobb Collaborative, to present this item. Okay?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to bring forward the information. We're passing around, we went old school today. We printed up hard copies, and the reason I did this is so that you have hard copies of the materials and the resources that we use to facilitate this process, the Cobb County Nonprofit Grant, throughout the year. And so that if you get questions from your constituents, you can refer to that, but always I'm available to answer any questions as we go through this today. As mentioned, I'm Karen Carter. I'm the Executive Director of the Cobb Collaborative, and the Collaborative has been tasked or given the outsourcing for the facilitation of the Cobb County Nonprofit Grant since 1998. So we're coming up on a 20-year anniversary that we've been doing this for the county, and that is the facilitation of the grant funding for the nonprofit organizations providing human service needs in Cobb County. So in this process, I wanted to mention, you may not be aware, has gone through an auditing process at the Cobb County level prior to me coming on to the Collaborative. I've been with the Collaborative now three and a half years, it'll be four years in September, so I've had the opportunity to go through two grant cycles. It's a biannual process. We do the application submissions every other year. And so this past January of 2016 was the start of that process. So we're in our off year now where we kind of reevaluate all of the materials and the resources used based on the feedback given by the different organizations that submitted applications and/or went through the process but decided not to submit applications, so that we have better resources that we use to be able to use for the county. So with that, inside your packet, I'm not going to go through line by line and item by item, as I mentioned, I just want to highlight a few of the things. They're given at the beginning a timeline, and as you can see, this process starts in January. It is a year-long process that we go through. It is with the release of the public notice that talks about the two different RFP meetings that are held, and they're held in two different places within the county, two different days at two different times, hoping that we can make it convenient for most of the organizations in some form.
Okay, one second. Are you in this standout right here?
I'm actually on the timeline, starting with the timeline.
Okay, thank you.
The other, there's some information about the Collaborative in there for you as well. But starting with the timeline, in January, the release of the RFP, and so the increase, the increased notification of that has happened through the years. Cobb County website, TV23 tickers, each of the commissioners, different newsletters that go out have been supportive in that effort. Of course, the Cobb Collaborative website in our constant contact, and it goes in the MDJ, hoping that we can catch as many nonprofit organizations as possible. As you can see, they're held in February. We give them 30 days' notice for this process. There were two different ones, February 23 and 25. You can see, one was at Riverside Epicenter in the South Cobb area and Cumberland Community Church in the East Cobb area. During those two RFP sessions, we had 95 total participants representing 70 new organizations and 25 current organizations, or those that are receiving current funding. This is a mandatory RFP session, and if they attend and they're on time and they stay the full two hours, they're given a certificate of attendance that shows that they were there, and that is, becomes one of the items that they submit with their application, and that is needed to determine it as being complete. At that RFP session, we go through the actual application and the guide. So in your packet, you'll notice there is three other things. This is the actual RFP presentation that we go through. There's members from the Cobb County Finance Department that go over the financial information. There is the actual draft copy of the application itself, so they have the opportunity to view that as we go through it. And then there's a step-by-step guide that walks them through each and every question on the application, giving them tips and hints on how to fill that out or how to complete it, as well as a checklist of all of the supporting documentation that is required, which is this document here. And that is what is needed for it to be deemed a complete application. So through this two-hour session, we go through page by page of that presentation that talks about prior funding, it talks about requirements, it talks about different items that they need and the importance of that. And as I mentioned, the Finance Department helps us with that. We answer questions after that RFP, after the last RFP session is completed, the application goes live on the Collaborative website as well as the guide. They have a good six weeks before they can, before it's actually deemed due, and those get logged here at the county. They were due on March 31st this past year, and the Finance Department actually logs, collects those and logs them and timestamps them for us. From those, we do what is called an application review, and that's simply, we pull together a committee of three individuals that are non-compete, so they're not, they're not actually submitting an application, they're non-conflicted, so they have no stake in the game. And they go through specifically looking for completeness of those applications. Are there the right copies? Are there the board meeting minutes, the directory, all of those checklists? And if there's anything missing, including the certificate of attendance, it's deemed incomplete and at that point does not go on. At that point, they would receive a phone call from me as well as a letter stating the reason why it was deemed incomplete and invited at that point to apply in the next cycle, which would actually be another two years. Once it's deemed complete, it goes on through the next part of the review process. And during the RFP process is when we actually solicit volunteers for the peer review process, and that is what we use to evaluate the applications that are submitted. So at the RFP meetings, we are looking for individuals that are program director level, CFO, CEO, grant writers and such, that are willing to serve on these peer review teams, which are peer review teams of three. There's a team captain as well as hopefully a finance person as well. That was a best practice that came out of the audit that was performed. So at that point, depending on the actual applications that are received, I have to go out and enlist all of the volunteers that are going to make up these teams. So whether they're community volunteers, nonprofit leaders, government, we've got some finance folks on there as well, they make up the peer review team, and they are assigned three different applications to evaluate. And during the RFP and the application process, the applicant is given the score sheets that will be used, so they know exactly what they're being scored upon. The peer review teams have about, it's a four- or five-week process to evaluate the applications and then go out and actually conduct a site visit, where they will go to the actual organization. The organization has the ability at that point to shine, to talk about their programs, to show their progress, to talk about their measurement tools, and to really give the peer review team an idea of what goes on at that organization and that program and how viable it is. There are three areas where they are scored, and there's 100 points possible. In order to go further on for funding consideration, the organization must score an 80 or better. Even though they score an 80 or better, the last cycle, in the 15-16 cycle, 97 was the minimum score needed to receive funding because of the funding allotment. So even though they scored 80 and they had a great application, they may not have received. In this case, they didn't. Unless they received a 97 or better, they did not receive funding through the last cycle. So once that cycle is completed, and that happens in April and May, and then once they are, the scores and the applications come back to me, the information is compiled, and each applicant receives a phone call from me as well as a handwritten letter on letterhead that states what their score is. They have the opportunity to appeal or show concern for the scores that they received. Any points deducted on those score sheets, the team must verify and justify, if you will, why those points were deducted. And so the organization has the opportunity to take that and, one, use it as a tool for better success on more other applications, but more importantly, they can see why in this particular instance, they didn't score possibly the way they wanted to, but they have an ability to come back and show concern and appeal that score. And there's a two-week window in which to do that. Once that happens, we gather a different set of volunteers, and that's called the Peer Evaluation Committee. That's our team captains. We have representatives from the committee, from the Finance Department, as well as the Cobb Collaborative Board of Directors, and we go through and address those concerns. The reason we have the team captains in the room is so that for whichever team evaluated that particular application, they can speak to that and they can justify their reasoning. In most cases, the decision or the scoring sustains itself, it's not changed. In a very short instance or a very small instance, points may be re-awarded, thus changing the point score for that individual organization. So that's why that's done at the beginning of that meeting. Once all those are done, we take a look at, okay, how many do we have in this particular cycle? And we divide up the money. This past cycle for 1718, it was a four-hour meeting. During that meeting, the scores and the names of the organizations are hidden. In this case, we use the Greek alphabet. So for example, Agency XYZ might have been Alpha Pi. So the individuals in the room that are doing the evaluating and divvying up the money have no idea what organization scored what. They just see a Greek name, they see a total score, the amount that was requested, and how we have to go through now and split that up. Through the process that we had this past cycle, we had a total of, 36 applications were submitted. Four were disqualified as incomplete right off the bat, whether they didn't have, we had one that didn't even sign their application. So it was a matter of they probably submitted a beautiful application, but they didn't take the time to sign it and get the noted signatures, whether they didn't have the right copies, whatever the case it was. Four of them were deemed incomplete from the very beginning. During the review process, there were five additional disqualifications based on mandatory indicators and such that weren't met during the application process. And so going forward with that in your packet, and you'll see on the other side of your folder, the peer review training manual and PowerPoint presentation is available there as well as the scoring sheets are included. But this is actually, this sheet here with the yellow highlights is where we landed for this past cycle of 1516, I'm sorry, 1718, excuse me. So of that, the 30 applications that scored 80 points or better, there was a total dollar amount requested of $1,191,053. Through the budget cut that was approved through the FY17 cycle in September, there was a cut to our funding to $850,695. So you can see, there's a little bit of a disparity there. Of those, the, so when we sit down and we look at that, how do we make the dollars stretch as much as we can? And the rationale we use for that is when you look at a request, it would be very easy to say, split it equally between all of those organizations, and why do some organizations get more than others? Well, you look at the programs that they're serving and their total outcomes. For example, we use Habitat for Humanity as an example. If it takes them $100,000 to build a home, and that's what they're submitting an application for, and you give them $20,000, there's an $80,000 shortfall, which you've now created more work for that organization, because now they need to build that house because they said they were going to, but now they're $80,000 short. And so now they have to go out and find those additional funds because you've now just given them $20,000. So through this grant cycle, you can see at the top upper right-hand corner of this same document that I'm using, for a 98, they, of some, an organization that scored 98 received 67.06 of their total requested funding. Going up, 99 received 71.03, and for those that scored a perfect score, they received 78.5. That is how we were able to chisel down and effectively and equitably fund the organizations with the funding allotment that was given to us. Once that happens, this peer evaluation committee meets and decides how or recommends the best way to do this. The Board, the Cobb Collaborative Board of Directors then, in their next meeting, convenes and takes a look at this and says, is it fair? Is it equitable? Are the organizations are going to be able to work within this confine without costing them too much more work? And then it is either approved or sent back or denied at that point. Once it is approved, then another letter goes out to the individual organizations stating that this is your proposed recommended allotment based on, of course, your final decision, which is where the final decision is made at the budget meetings. From there, anyone who does not receive funding through this process received a personal invitation to me to sit on the committee that meets monthly to drive this process. It's a two-year commitment, and in doing that, we're hoping that we can provide these organizations the tools they need to be more successful through the next round. And so of the organizations that I reached out to, we have four that took me up on the offer, that did not receive funding through this cycle and are now sitting on the committee. So we're excited to have them. It's a new perspective from their point of view. You know, what didn't they understand? What could we make more clear? They didn't see the reasoning behind why we asked this question or that question. So we have a new, a new cycle begins this year, where, as I said, we're going through evaluating those individual concerns and feedbacks. Do we need one more? So of that, you can see the, there are three different opportunities to submit an application and three different pots of, three different priority areas, if you will. Question?
Have you, has anybody seen this list or is this?
Yes, this was what was voted on for the October 1 contracts. These have been written. Yes, oh yes. So they have an opportunity theoretically to submit three different applications in three different priority areas, and the priority areas are basic needs, education and employment, and then public safety, legal, and crime. So the applications they submit must fall into one of those priority areas, and theoretically, an organization could submit three different applications and request three different totals for those programs. What's unique about this grant is that it is a unrestricted grant in that we can use this grant for infrastructure building and strengthening, to have a better accountability for our organizations. So that means, yes, payroll, so that we have people to run these programs, buildings, so that we have a place to conduct and provide those resources, such as that. So we look at, there are 19 agencies that were funded, but 23 different programs that were funded. So there's an example of some of the organizations had applied for more than one application, and both applications then qualified with that point score. And this time around, it was a 98 was the minimum score due to the funding allotment and then the further cut. So 98 was the total score that had to be achieved in order to receive funding through the FY17 and 18 cycle. So this document is how it was broken down with the $850,000, excuse me, $850,695, which was the final amount that was approved through the budget approval process in September. So when we look at that, we see through the years, we started at 1.2 million roughly before 2008, and then 2008, it went down to 965,000 where it's kind of held steady until 2016, when the allotment was cut to 850,000. So what we're doing today, and in my hopes, I'm hoping to have you see the importance of the process, how it is very comprehensive, transparent, equitable, fair. It involves a good number of members of the community, both nonprofit and the business, our Board of Directors. When all is said and done through this process, I usually work with, on an average, 90 volunteers throughout the county. We are, it is our intention to get back to the 1.2 million dollars to make us whole so that we can continue to do the work that the nonprofits do within the community. The other part in your packet is just some information based on the FY15 and 16 cycle. So before I go on to that, is there any questions that anybody has for the one we just went through?
Christian Weatherford?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, maybe three. I believe I read the minimum is 10,000 is awarded.
Correct.
And the other, you said your intention to get back to 1.2. Do you receive any other funding other than this for your position or everything?
Yes, we do. We receive $38,065 as a outsourcing fee to cover the process and the facilitation of the grant.
But is there, do you do anything other than this, I guess is what I'm a little confused?
The Collaborative, yes. Through what, we get additional state funding from Georgia Family Connection Partnership. We serve as the council, excuse me, the coordinator for Cobb, representing the state and affecting change, positive change for children and families.
So what is your total budget other than this?
$102,000.
Is that your budget then this?
I am the only paid staff member for the Collaborative.
Kind of what I'm getting to.
Yes.
The other question I have, and you know, I am very impressed with the thoroughness in how you go through this process, so that's not my concern. My concern is that some of these organizations are well-funded otherwise than this. They have funding sources, scalas, which I just attended, and different sorts of things that have additional funding. Do you worry that we're helping those that are already well-funded with additional money when we could be helping those that aren't so well-funded? And that's my concern, because I know, you know, MUST and School Foundation, I know they all have fundraising, and I'm not sure what they make or don't make.
Right.
But I'd much rather see the ones that need it more sometimes, unless I'm missing something.
No, you're not, and thank you for bringing that up. You mentioned the minimum. Part of the requirements, it is a minimum ask of $10,000. This is not meant as a startup grant. This is meant to help you sustain a program that is already in process and very successful. To build in sustainability of the program, we require that it is, your request cannot exceed 20% of your operating budget for Cobb County. And the reason I say that is because we have some organizations, although they have their headquarters located outside of Atlanta, they serve the great majority population of Cobb County, such as your Big Brothers and Sisters, your habitats, your, you know, MUST Ministries has other locations. So we stipulate that it cannot be more than 20% of that operating budget. In the past, we've not asked for specific numbers on how much other funding you receive. We do ask where your other funding comes from, whether it be federal, state, other local, private donations, things like that, because we want to make sure that they're not putting all of their eggs in one basket, should this funding suddenly, as we saw, be reduced or, heaven forbid, go away altogether. We don't want to cripple an organization either, but to your point, we do, we do look at that. We want to make sure that we, we're not jeopardizing them for the ability to receive other funding and go after other funding, but we're not, we're not weighing it real heavily and throughout the process. We are aware that a lot of the organizations do have that, and the ability to have other funding.
Thank you. Just one final point. So each of these, for example, MUST, and I'm certainly a big supporter of MUST in years, so this would be a unique program that they have that you're funding or just a general organization?
This is through a unique program. So each of, even though it, they may use it for payroll, it is payroll for the person who facilitates that one particular program that fits into that priority area. And when you see, if I can just, on this list here, you'll see MUST Ministries highlighted in yellow as a new organization funded. Although they've received funding in the past, they did not receive funding through the 15-16 cycle because their score fell below that 97 benchmark. So they may have received funding in the past, but for this particular, it is new to this cycle. Of those that are highlighted there, that is the only one. The others, Vision Rehabilitation Services, may have received funding, I want to say, in 1112. All the other ones are brand-new to receiving the county funding.
Thanks, Karen. That was a very good presentation. And all these programs that are funded are specific to Cobb?
Correct.
So the money stays in the Cobb program?
And they have to extrapolate out on their measurement tools, the Cobb County numbers. So they may submit in the, their application in general, they show the big picture, but then they have to extrapolate out the data specifically for Cobb residents so that we can ensure that the money is being used for Cobb residents.
Okay. And you may not be able to answer this, but maybe Finance can. We also have impact grants that are separate from the nonprofit, but they're for new and expansion of existing programs. So let's say, one of the ones on here that's a new program or even an existing program, could this same organization apply for them as well, but it would be a different program, not funded by this, or could it be duplicate?
Could be duplicate, and in most cases it is because we have a situation where funding has been cut. So a lot of these organizations are turning to other means, and when the community impact grants were created, even though we're two separate entities, the last presentation, you may have remembered me coming forward, I did with the Executive Director of the Foundation, and at the time, the two organizations were looking to merge. That did not happen. For the benefit of both of our organizations, we felt that it was in our best interest to still stay separate. Although... Although those impact grants were still created, a lot of the organizations through that process, through this process, that received, as we said, the score of ninety-eight, only netted sixty-seven percent of what they requested. So there's an example of where these organizations are turning to other funders to be able to make up the difference of what they truly need to run that program.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rott?
Thanks, Karen. That was a lot of information. I'm noticing in the fifteen, sixteen grants, that nine of the organizations that received money in fifteen, sixteen, did not receive anything in seventeen, eighteen. And almost all of those were new in fifteen, sixteen.
And, and, go ahead.
Has it been common practice that, I mean, these, because I don't know what the dollar amount is, but when you give money to new organizations and then they don't show up the following year, you would think that they know how to do the application. So is it that they just went away, or, like, where did they go?
Few different things. We had one organization, Omasaze, that closed its doors, unfortunately. Had a very unique program, early education, reading program, and it's unfortunate. They closed their doors, so they, even though they were through the original application process, they received a recommendation for funding. At the time, before we came to the actual budget approval here at the county, we were made aware that they had closed their doors. So those funds were reallocated through that process. We had several that, and even folks on my committee, that through the application process either had a new grant writer, change in staff, or made stupid mistakes.
Okay. I mean, I know when we met-
Or decided not to, we had a couple of organizations that just decided not to reapply through the process.
And maybe you could, you know, when we met and talked about this, you know, there was the discussion about if you give a hundred dollars to a hundred organizations versus a thousand dollars to ten, you know, you have a bigger impact with the fewer number of organizations. And it just seems like in fifteen, sixteen, you have twenty-two organizations here, fourteen existing and eight new, and then in seventeen, eighteen, we have nineteen new organizations. It's only three less. It just seems to me, what is the rationale about, you know, when you get a budget cut, like you did, which is about, I don't know, about a hundred thousand dollars?
Hundred-and-thirteen thousand.
Why would you add new? If all these programs, you know, having, you know, carrying on from maybe thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and then into seventeen, eighteen, why would you add new? And then, because when I go down the list here, there's a couple that got extra money from the year before, but most of them took hits. Some of them pretty sizable. I mean, what's the rationale there?
The rationale, when we go through the peer evaluation committee meeting, where we decide the funding, is, again, there's, there are different rationales and different scenarios that are created based on how we can most effectively divvy up the money, if you will. Through the fifteen, sixteen cycle, if I remember correctly, there were forty-six to forty-eight applications received, whereas this cycle, there were only thirty-six total that were received. So we received ten less. And so a lot of it is relative to how many applications we receive, and the total number of dollars requested, and how we can go through the different rationales. And that's just how the committee voted this time around to do it, is take it based on the requested amount versus any kind of historical amount. In the past, at fifteen, sixteen, we looked at the rationale of a historical amount to try and keep them as whole as possible.
Right. Well, it just seemed to me that with the budget cuts that we've talked about, it just seems that it would make more sense to, when you know you're not going to have as much money, to not start, keep adding, especially if, and I'd be interested to see what happened between thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, if there is a tendency for the majority of the ones that don't come back or are not there the following year, if they were new. Because, yeah, it's great to fund a new organization or a new program, but if it's taken from the existing ones, and then they don't come back the next year, it seems to me that's almost like a waste. And, you know, because, for example, the biggest drop I see here is Center for Family Resources is thirty-three thousand less than fifteen, sixteen. And that's, that's a pretty big number, even though, yeah, they got a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, you know, and that's at least two or three of the new ones that were added.
Right.
It would just seem, because every one of these organizations, every time they take a cut, you know, they got a, everybody's helping people, but it, you know, when you start taking money from individuals, it just seems that it would make more sense to, in a lean year, not add new stuff.
Well, and I agree with you, because we're expected every year to do more with less money, and it becomes harder and harder. And so the beauty of the committees that we work with, year after year, they're new. And so the, they get to determine those priorities when we go through those, that rationale process of how we're going to divide up that money. We don't go into an application cycle preventing people from applying, so we welcome everybody, whether you're a new organization or not. You do however, have to have two years' worth of financial information, so that you can have an audit and be able, audit and/or review, so that we can determine your financial viability through the process, so we can mitigate any risk to the county. It really isn't, when we look at it, we don't look at where you, where your organization sits within the county, district-wise, you know, the, we're not looking for a total number of populations served. It's just really how the organizations fall and the scores they receive. And this time around, in other cycles, there were more new organizations still dealing with that nine-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars. So we, it just ends up falling that way. We like to see new organizations getting funded, but it's all about the programs and whether that they can go through successfully the application process. We don't want to restrict them. So any questions on the, I just, quick, that was seventeen, eighteen. I just want to quickly just go over the fifteen, sixteen? Yes?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, I have some questions for you today. We've had a lot of discussion internally with respect to the grant process, and I knew, know when you came on board, you and I had spoken to, maybe this is, some of these are suggestions, and then some are questions.
Okay.
Yeah. This one is initially as a suggestion. There are three categories that you share, that you provided, that funding was split up into. And I think that's been the approach, at least from what I can recall of me coming on the board. And I know that with the changing economy, changing climate, policy interests and needs can change around the county. It would be helpful if maybe we had a discussion with the commissioners on what our interests were with that, or to, I think we also had a, there was an audit done by Kennesaw State, the Burris Institute, that evaluated Cobb County, just to see what the policy, major policy interests are of the county, to ensure that, how we're awarding funds really fits in what we're observing as commissioners, and what that study is pointing to, would be helpful. Some questions here with respect to process, and I'm going to refer back to the timeline that you shared.
Okay.
To better follow. There are a couple of peer reviews, I believe. There's a peer review team that, a three-person peer review team that evaluates the application, and you provided that those are persons who are not interested, they're non-compete organizations, I think you provided?
The very first, it's called an application review team, and that is the non-conflicted. And they're just looking for content within the application submission documents. The peer evaluation, or, I'm sorry, the peer review team, they are from the nonprofit world, most, the good majority of them. There's some finance people in there, and there is also community volunteers as well.
So I don't get the term non-conflicted versus conflicted. Your first team of three, that's non-conflicted, meaning that?
They don't, they don't submit an application. The organizations or businesses they represent would not be submitting an application.
The second team, is it non-conflicted also?
It is not. Some of, most of those, not all, but most of them have, they have submitted an application, but they are not reviewing their own application, nor, they have to complete, in the, when they submit an application for a peer review team member, they have to sign a non-disclosure, or confidentiality and non-disclosure, disclosure agreement, where they actually will go through and list any conflicts that they may have. So obviously, I may be the executive director of the collaborative, but personally, I know so-and-so from this organization, and I personally volunteer for this organization, and a family member sits on the board over there. So I disclose all of that. And so when I sit down and I create those peer review teams, it's like a huge puzzle, because I have to get three members on a team, not from the same organization, that are able to go out and evaluate fairly three separate organization applications that they have nothing to do with. And most often times, they're not even familiar with the work that's done in those organizations.
Okay. Okay, so under that design, someone who is affiliated with an organization that has submitted an application could be evaluating an application of another organization that's competing for the same amount, for the same set of funds?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. That seems to have conflict, even though they're signing, just?
I think in, yes and no. And I think because we're looking at it being a peer review process, everybody wants everybody to be successful. The feedback that I've received through this process has been very positive. The information shared, oftentimes, we have, our team captains are those that are on the committee. And most often, those committee members with me have been on that committee for seven or eight different cycles. So that's fourteen years. And so these individuals are able to offer these organizations the ability to mentor, if you will, and then provide good valuable feedback. Everybody wants everybody to succeed. Cobb County, one of the things that I hear, because I'm part of the statewide family connection, is that Cobb County, our organizations, they say, they play well in the sandbox together. We share resources, and that's the main, the main thing the collaborative does within the community, is we convene all of those major stakeholders to share resources, to be successful. So in this off-year that we're talking about, our general membership meeting, this coming up March twenty-second, is, we're going to have a panel for the application process. So those that have successfully received funding, those that submitted an application and didn't receive funding, Kathy Brown from the finance office will be there, so that our general members can actually ask questions. And then at that point, hopefully, start looking at their application for next year, so they can possibly mentor or partner with a brother-sister organization. So although it may appear, and the perception may be that they're all competing for the money, yes, in effect, yes, it is. It's very competitive. But two, you'll find in that peer evaluation committee, everybody is on even ground, because the application, the organizations are hidden. You know, only I know what I requested, so I'm not going to know what you or the other organizations have requested. So, yes and no.
Okay. Yeah. You know, this can be evaluated offline. I know that, looking at the list over time, there just seems to be a lot of the names that are repeated year after year, meaning they continue to get the same amount of funds, or they continue to be awarded through the program. So it makes me wonder just how open the process is to having others be able to play in that same sandbox versus them that are already there, just continuing to evaluate peers, and somehow that process being favorable to those who continue to be awarded.
Well, and I think when you look at it that way, I can only speak to the two cycles that I've been involved with, you know, here while I'm at the collaborative. I have seen organizations that have received funding and didn't get funding as a, you know, MUST Ministries this past cycle. Through this cycle, there was, through the four that were initially disqualified, one of them, Sweetwater Mission, had been receiving funding in the past, but that was, again, they were missing a requirement in the beginning. And of the one, two, three, four, five, that were disqualified during the review process, one, two, three had received funding in the past. So although that may look like, the perception is that it's the same organizations over and over and over again, you'll find that with staff changes and silly mistakes and just different things like that, it isn't really reality.
Okay. Let me go to another question. There is a couple of meetings that are set for all applicants, that's mandatory?
Correct.
And I know I've gotten feedback from at least a couple organizations about the meetings that, I guess the times during the day were not necessarily convenient, particularly for the smaller ones, where the executive director is the only full-time person. Is there a caveat that can be made? You shared a number of paper documents that's within our packets, that's reviewed during those meetings. Is there any way that that can be provided online, so that someone does not have to physically be present, but can still be able to review the materials that are provided?
Well, during the RFP process, the committee has made the RFP process a mandate, because they felt that there is something collective or beneficial about hearing the collective information together. Where, when you go through an RFP, and we are there on site, and we're able to answer questions as they come up, the committee feels that it's mandatory. And without that individual attending that RFP, they're missing out on vital information. Although the information's posted on the website, you know, they are given an opportunity to ask questions through a written form. I answer the questions, and then the question and answer is posted on the website as well. But again, it, because it's such a competitive process, we want to make sure that everybody's hearing the same information.
I can hear that does benefit an opportunity versus requirement, where you just can't be considered. It was just, I know it was tough for a couple of our organizations.
So are you suggesting possibly a third RFP held, what were the times they said were most convenient?
Again, my preference would be, there's just so much that's done online and electronically these days, and there's a lot of other grant programs. I think I have one grant program through the ARC that's on my newsletter, where you don't have to show up to a meeting to be considered for funding. And I'm just wondering, what's unique about our process that's making this a requirement? And just to consider that there may be other organizations that could be eligible for, you know, consideration. Especially when I look and see that out of the thirty-six organizations that, well, I don't know how many attended, but it says here, at least, I'll see if I got my step correct, but thirty-six organizations applied, and you said nine just were cut out from the very beginning for not meeting requirements. But if I'm hearing you correctly, any organization that applied had to have attended. So out of the thirty-six that even decided to step up and apply, we're still, a quarter of them are missing requirements after attending that meeting.
Correct. And that may just be that they either don't have their 501(c)(3), some of them were looking at it as an opportunity to start a nonprofit, which this is, is not made for.
How would that not be clear at that meeting, though?
It is clear at that meeting, and that's why they decided not to apply. So of the individuals that attended, let's see, on the very first one, on February twenty-third, we had forty agencies represented. Thirty of those were new grant, new potential grantees, and ten were current grantees.
Okay.
That's on that first one.
Is this for, is this for twenty sixteen?
This was for the seventeen, eighteen funding cycle, yes. So these were the ones that were held a year ago at this time.
Okay.
And so then, on the one on the twenty-fifth, let's see, bear with me here a minute, we had fifty-five total attendees, representing forty new potential agencies, and fifteen current grantees. Of that, I remember, and I can go through the list, but we had some that were animal agencies serving animals, which this would not fit. We had some new, brand-new organizations that didn't have the financial documentation, you know, and then at some point, the ten-thousand-dollar minimum sometimes comes into it, where they just don't need ten thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay. I don't want to, I don't want to debate this. I'm just trying- I'm just trying to go, I'm just trying to understand from the ones that applied, not necessarily attended the training, I'm just looking at the stats you provided of those that applied that missed requirements. My whole goal is to see, how can this program be broadened to engage other organizations, particularly where we have our impact grant, which I think they have a lower cap on how much funding can be requested.
Right.
So if there are organizations that are looking for significant dollars through the county, this is the program. And so, you know, I'm trying to see with what you're sharing, how the program can be broadened where those organizations have, seem as if they have more of a fighting chance. Because I'm, the questions that I'm asking you, and I'm sorry, I don't want to be combative, but they're issues that the nonparticular organizations in the district where I serve are sharing with me as hurdles to them being able to be considered in this program.
And I did meet with them.
Yeah.
After this process. They did share those concerns with me.
Okay.
And I can share that, the letter of the suggestions that they gave, you know, but one of those was do away with the financial review and audit.
Okay.
And my thought process to that was, you're running a business, and you have to treat it as such, as a small business, albeit, but would you be able to walk into a bank today and apply for a small business loan using your check register as financial viability? You can't. So there has to be some form of financial viability, and I think there's some struggle there. And we're working with them. And that's why a lot of this is coming up here. But to your question of how can we broaden this, one of the statistics that I had given was...
Karen, I must suggest we might want to do this offline, because we're going to have seven hours here for seven topics. This is an issue, dear and dear to Commissioner Cupid's heart, slowly but surely, I think that you're making headway on that. I think it's going to be tough, though, because we've reduced the amount, Commissioner, already, so that makes it even harder.
Yeah. With $1.2 million, I would have been able to fund all of those on 80 points or better.
Yeah. Your point system is so generous, it's very generous, you know, the 80-point system or the point system.
Sure.
So we can discuss that further, but the only other thing in your packet is the data collected. Part of the requirement for receiving funding is that you are required to submit a midterm and a final term report showing the progress that you have made on your programs. And so those are the two documents in your packet that look like this. One is for FY '15, one's for FY '16. Bottom line, you'll see total over the course of the two years of the funding for FY '15 and '16, that almost 25,000 people were touched here in Cobb County, creating a more stable living situation, housing situation, educational system, legal, and so on with the funding. So, you know, of course, we are very appreciative of the funding, we hope it continues, we'd like to get back to being whole. Commissioner Cupid, you raised the question of a needs assessment, and that is something that does need to be done. So separate from the making us whole at the $1.2 million mark, I'd like to request that the collaborative be granted an outsourced facilitation of a countywide needs assessment, which would entail an RFP third-party organization that would come in, not from Cobb, but from, you know, those that do these needs assessments, but at a cost of roughly $100,000. But we would facilitate that process. But I think you're right. I think the county needs it. The last one that was done, I believe, from the records I can find, are 2010. And we all know what kind of growth the county's gone through in the last seven years, but it was also done by the AL Burris Institute at Kennesaw State, but not as comprehensive as I think we need. So I think we need to outsource that.
All right.
But I'm happy to answer any additional questions if you have any.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time today. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Now, we'll go back to tab one. And Mr. Wilgus?
Good afternoon, Chairman Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. This item is to provide information on the final concept plan for the Wendy Hill-Terrill Mill Road Connector, state PI number 0013967, Cobb County Project Number X2401. Wendy Hill-Terrill Mill Road Connector is an approved project in the thoroughfare and mobility improvements component of the 2016 SPOS Transportation Improvements Program. It is also an approved project in the Atlanta Regional Commission's Transportation Improvement Program designated as state PI number 0013967. We request, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners, consider information regarding the final concept plan for the Wendy Hill-Terrill Mill Road Connector. And I'm going to turn this over to Karen Matthews, who is my project manager, for the rest of the presentation.
Karen, do me a favor. Do not read the PowerPoint slides.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. All right, so the Wendy Hill-Terrill Mill Connector project has been around for decades, really, as kind of an idea of a new road to relieve the traffic congestion on Powers Ferry. It was identified as being a higher priority about three years ago, when the Northwest Corridor Managed Lanes project really got on the ground and was moving. There is a, an exit for the Cumberland area at Terrill Mill Road. We expect a good number of the Cumberland job market to use that exit to get into the Cumberland CID area, and so another route for them to get down from Terrill Mill to the Cumberland area and then back up to access those lanes became a higher priority. It's also a great opportunity to provide additional connections to the Bob Callan and Acres Mill Trail networks in the area. This is a location map showing the general vicinity. You can see I-75 on the left, Powers Ferry on the right, and it extends from Wendy Hill in the south up to Terrill Mill Road in the north. So three years ago, in 2014, we evaluated a bunch of alternatives, including extension of the existing Leland Drive, as well as some new alternatives that were on new location. The route, the northernmost route in yellow there was the one that ended up being the preferred alternative. This provides us a truly parallel route to I-75 that gets us away from the interchange at Wendy Hill. It provides connectivity to Interstate North Parkway to the south, to Bentley Road to the north, so that we never have to send cars down Wendy Hill or Terrill Mill to access this new road. We're looking at doing a four-lane section with a median in the middle. We have a five-foot sidewalk on the right and a 10-foot multi-use trail on the left. A portion of this road is expected to become part of the Bob Callan Trail Network between Wendy Hill and about 2/10 of a mile into the road, and then it'll go back down into the Rottenwood Creek area. We've had some public involvement this winter. We held a public information meeting in November and attended a couple HOA meetings for some condos in the vicinity. We do have right-of-way impacts. This is a new location road. There's 32 parcels anticipated with 16 apartment or condo buildings being impacted. Here's our schedule. It shows our PIOH was in the fall, late fall, early winter. We're looking to begin right-of-way acquisition this summer, starting with all of our appraisals. We're allotting two years for right-of-way acquisition because of the large number of parcels. We would put it out to construction in fall 2019, which would get our contractors out on the ground in early 2020. We're looking at probably a two-year construction timeframe. There were $20 million identified in the 2016 SPOS for this project. We also have about $11.8 million from GDOT in House Bill 170 money. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as Karen said, this has been around forever, and it was very expensive in its initial incarnation because of the big bridge that would have to go over Rottenwood Creek. But really, the first thing that kind of brought it back to the board's attention was the continuing push by the CID and folks in Wildwood about widening Powers Ferry to get another lane, to get the folks out. And through numerous gap studies and some other things, it was determined that all that would do would just push the problem down Terrill Mill and further into East Cobb. And then the final thing that really kind of got everyone on board was the introduction of the managed lanes and the fact that the first exit is at Terrill Mill Road. And with that, the Cumberland CID realized that there was actually no way for the folks on the managed lanes to get into Cumberland. So then this took a higher priority. And I think it's really important to just, you know, we talk about interconnectivity, but this segment of the road, you'd be able to go from Delk Road all the way down to basically the BMW dealership that you see on Interstate 285 without ever leaving the road. So it's a huge reliever for the traffic in the area, and it just basically gives folks another alternative, because right now, if there's an incident on 75, everybody goes to Powers Ferry. And so then this would give folks another alternative. As a matter of fact, a lot of folks coming on 285 westbound would be able to get off of 285 and get on this road and make their way up into East Cobb or to the, you know, Delk Road area. So I think it's a good project, and it's been a long time coming.
Yeah, this is kind of a general question, you may or may not be able to answer it, but the managed lanes, I know of at least two, and maybe more, this particular one and the one at Oak Grove, they seem to have landed, put exits where we have no infrastructure and in neighborhoods. Do we have any input in any of that? Because I have the same problem at Oak Grove, and I don't understand, because this is definitely needed, it probably has, but we're going to need something up there, too. So, I mean, are we got other exits that they have done this to us?
This one, this one, we actually had a better planning, because Terrill Mill is such that we could, with this one project, really link in the commercial areas. The next one up is Roswell Road in Marietta, which they've got some good areas for a park and ride, but it is kind of an odd location, because it puts Cobb, some East Cobb and West Cobb people on roads inside of Marietta, which they really are not on right now. Big Shanty's a little different for us, in that it's, again, in the middle of a commercial area. Now, we do have some road improvements that we need to do to get people to a new park and ride at that location. The one that is most problematic on the system is Hickory Grove.
Correct.
Because it's purely residential, they're going to put a park and ride up there. So we're going to be having people come through residential areas and not sure exactly how the traffic is going to operate on there. We did have some input right now, where we're doing our input right now is for another managed lane project called West Wall, which goes from I-75 to I-20, where their first cut at exits, we're not in favor of in the least. So we are working with GDOT. You have to be years in front of them to really get the input that we need on the locations.
Well, I'm just curious, because it seems like we should have been able to be involved in that. And at Hickory Grove, they're going to put a park and ride, but we've got one up at the next exit at 92. So why are they putting a park and ride there? Is the bus is going to start there now instead of up in 92?
There, that Greta ride's going to start at Hickory Grove. The one reason why they're really looking at the park and ride at Hickory Grove, quite honestly, is because they've got property there. GDOT's got a huge empty property right there at the interstate.
I understand. Is that going to affect the Greta lot up at exit 277?
I don't think so, sir.
But those park and rides can get on the bus and get on the managed lanes from that point.
They'd have to go...
275 for about three miles, four miles, and then get on two miles. But you're working on all this, right?
Get his point.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. That's why, that's why we're working with them on the West Wall right now, because of the same situation in Cumberland, where they did not put the Acres Mill ramp in the original alignment, and now we're having to spend a lot of money to do it now.
Well, can we find some, you know, rare turtle in there that might set this back 50 years? I mean, we already got a lot at 92.
I know, sir.
So my mistake is I'm trying to be reasonable here, that's what you're telling me.
I understand. I understand. And like I said, we've met with Greta on this occasion at least twice. Greta's really the one who's driving where they want to put that lot. We're trying to work with them on some stuff, as well as on Big Shanty.
Okay. Well, how about you and Mr. Hankston call and get me sometime this week?
Okay.
So we can talk about this, because clearly, I need to be involved in this. This is crazy. We're diluting the effectiveness of what's already existing, and we have a habit pattern of people going to that parking lot already, and now we're going to go three miles down the road? I know. But it's, in the bottom line, it's all our money. Like I said this morning, it's either county money, state money...
Correct.
All right, or federal money. It's still our money. We're the one paying into it, we should have a voice into it, that's all I'm saying.
I think, in the discussions, because we've had big discussions on the West Wall, it appears that what they did with these managed lanes was to try to correct the mistake they made up in the ones in Gwinnett, where you had the dash-wide lines and you had to come in and out, and so they segregated these lanes. And then they intentionally put exits that were not existing exits, so that you weren't re-mingling back with the traffic. But on the West Wall, now that we've seen that that's what their mindset is, DOT's done a really good job of saying, you know, hey, wait a minute, because where they were going to put them into bindings, I mean, they were going to, you talk about putting it in a neighborhood, this was going to be like even smaller than Hickory Grove. Because Hickory Grove, didn't we go by that when we were looking at park property, right? Yeah. Well, where they wanted to put the West Wall ones was even worse. So at least now, I mean, DOT's doing a good job of, you know, kind of stepping in front of them, saying, yeah, wait a minute, let's not do that.
Go in somewhere, find this red darter fish, and we're going to put it in there. There you are. See, it's very close. And I'll go to California, I'll find one of these turtles, and we'll just start planting them there. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. Let's go to tab two.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dana Johnson, Cobb County Community Development. I'm here representing county staff in regard to code amendment package number two, which will have public hearings in February and March of 2017. These are changes to chapters 10 and 134 of the Cobb County Code. Chapter 10 is the animal section of the ordinance, and chapter 134 is the zoning section of the ordinance. And we do have Captain Owens here with me from animal control, in case any specific questions come up that I'll be more appropriate for public safety to answer, as well as Mr. Heaton as well. Getting into the code changes, again, chapter 10 is the animal section. This deals with tethering of animals. We have had a lot of public discussion recently about tethering of animals, and public safety and the county attorney's office have kind of looked at this particular issue and come up with a recommendation on how they think it could be best enforced in Cobb County. And basically, what this change would do would no longer allow single-point tethering, and instead require dogs to be on a trolley system as it relates to their mobility within a confined area, within an area that's enclosed. We did receive a lot of public comment in regard to this ordinance when this was first released. We received public comment from people who own a lot of horses in West Cobb, as well as from falconiers who abide by Department of Natural Resources regulations on falconering. And they provided us some good guidance on that, and as we bring forward the amendments to this particular code, we will take those into consideration, make sure that we don't create unintended consequences with the ordinance that's being brought forward for you.
Could we take them up to Hickory Grove?
Yeah. Getting into chapter 134, sir, this gets into the zoning ordinance. Two of the commissioners have requested an infill development technical review board, and we have done some research on these type of boards around metro Atlanta, and have come back with a recommendation for how we could incorporate this within our own particular process as it relates to infill development activity within neighborhoods. So basically, this would be, if the board approves this, this would... So basically, this would be, if the board approves this, this would be a five-member board who would look at tear-down, rebuild scenarios within neighborhoods that have been designated as infill neighborhoods, which means that there's an existing occurrence of tear-down, rebuild activity happening within that particular area. The purpose for this overall concept for the Infill Development Review, Technical Review Committee, is to really dig down and take a look at what's happening by professionals who understand architecture and land planning, where they can provide some guidance to make sure that the new construction is going to be fitting into the overall neighborhood character and not detracting from both the rights of the neighborhood to have a cohesive neighborhood, as well as the rights of the individual to build within the confines of their land regulations. So it's trying to find that good balance between the two in order to try to mitigate some of the challenges that we've experienced over the last few years as it relates to infill development activity. Lastly, sir, are changes in Section 134-271. This is the Special Exemptions, Special Exemptions Section of the Ordinance. Tomorrow night, the board will consider some changes to cemeteries and some other areas by incorporating them into the special land use permit category. If the board makes that change, we think that these changes need to occur in the Special Exemption Section so that they work together in tandem with one another. Basically, this would be adding a language under the cemeteries, under the Special Exemptions, saying that if it's existing before March 28, 2017, then as an existing cemetery, it would not need the special land use permit process. That coincides with the language for tomorrow, inserting the word "new" into cemeteries requiring the special land use permit. Clubs and lodges in residential areas are being incorporated in for special land use permits, so we would recommend completely removing them from the Special Exemption Section. And then we found some language as it relates to poultry that is, should have been removed a long time ago, and this more of a cleanup to make sure that it's properly removed from areas where it should not be located. And with that, sir, the schedule for this particular section of codes, again, you will have your first public hearing on this tomorrow on February 28 at 7:00 in this room. On March 28, at 7:00, we will have a second public hearing in regard to these. The Planning Commission will make a recommendation on the changes to Section 134 on March 7, and then March 14, I'll bring forward their recommendations from the Planning Commission prior to your adoption or consideration on March 28. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions, as well as our counterparts from Public Safety.
Yes, I shared my comments this morning with respect to the infill ordinance and believe there may be a path for to consider infill development, both in residential and commercial areas. One thing briefly, but the cemeteries and the special exemption, I think the new code that's being proffered will impact new cemeteries. For existing cemeteries, is there a limit on their expansion? You know, if it's only limited to new with the new code, can an existing one expand 10, 20 acres, 30?
There is no limit under the codes being considered tomorrow or on March, but that is something that certainly we would, if the board wants to move in that direction, we would probably have to make some changes prior to tomorrow's adoption, as well as with what's being considered for March.
I'm just trying to look 10, 20 years out, unfortunately, and, you know, if one were to expand significantly, I'm just, I don't want to put any other commissioner in a similar position where they don't have an ability to do anything about that.
Thank you. Just a couple of clarifications, if you don't mind, Mr. Johnson. The infill technical committee that we're proposing, and I'm supportive of that, is this is going to be a committee that looks at things that we might or might not miss in plan reviews. Is that kind of the way we're looking at it?
It would. It would really take, it would try not to deal with things like architecture and style because that is an individual taste, and it's kind of hard to have a board tell an individual what architecture that they should like and shouldn't like. So really, it really deals with issue of placement on a lot, of how you place a particular structure in a lot, and how you can mitigate some of the impact that that might have on neighboring properties.
And I'm familiar that, you know, coming from the city for many years, we had infill development and welcomed it, but most of that was handled in plan review. And I think that East Cobb area, Commissioner Otz's district, is kind of unique in that, you know, the homes they're putting back were a lot different than they were putting in Akron. But this would just be its checks and balances, if I understand it correctly.
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other thing, and Commissioner Cupid's comments about cemeteries, I have similar ones, and I know we get into some constitutional issues about churches and things like that. One in particular in my district that was, I don't know how many acres, and we didn't know who was doing what, because we now have that where you tell us those that don't go through us, but some of those don't meet the surrounding areas when they put them in there. And I don't know, can we look at that as well? Or is that something we can't do? I didn't mean to spring this on you, but I just thought of it when she mentioned about cemeteries.
We can certainly look at it. There are additional federal laws that are in effect as it deals with churches, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act is something that we would need to look at and see how other communities handle these particular issues. But we can certainly ask the zoning staff to do kind of a best practice analysis on approval of churches, that we can have a good comparison sake, to see how other communities address these particular issues, sir.
Okay. But just to be clear, I'm not against it happening, nor do I want to oppose it. I just want to make sure that, you know, we talk about mega mansions, sometimes we get mega churches between two houses, two subdivisions, and it would have, if not the same effect, a worse effect on the surrounding areas. And I just thought maybe we'd have some kind of review to take a look at that, to make sure that it's more in character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Commercial infill. Would, if you're demolishing a building or redeveloping a site, would that not be covered under zoning? And whatever you're reselling for, NRC or CRC or whatever, would have to meet the setbacks and the building height and all that for commercial?
It's possible. It depends on the particular scenario of the lot. Certain lots are commercial without any stipulations, and it's in a valid commercial category. In cases like that, you could just do a tear-down, rebuild, and build as appropriate. There are other areas where they're grandfathered zoning district, where that is usually the case when they are required to come back in order to rezone the property, which provides the Planning Commission, the Board of Commissioners, an opportunity to stipulate the property in order to make, ensure those transitions are in order.
Okay. I'm just not clear on the commercial end, and I don't think that's what the intent of the commissioners that were sponsoring this, but I don't know. I would think even the older ones like GC that we don't use anymore, really, that are grandfathered in, have to come back for rezoning when they do something different.
When they've lost their grandfathering status, they would be required to come back for zoning. And I think it's a six-month.
So that would all be covered in zoning. But the other part of the question is, how are you or who is going to designate which subdivisions or commercial properties fall into this infill category that are going to be reviewed?
As it's written right now, they would need to be, they would come from, like we do with streetlight districts and things of that nature, they would need to be a petition from the property owners to request a review by staff to bring it forward to the board. I've heard from some of the sponsors that they wish to also have a second avenue of designation via designation directly by the Board of Commissioners after a staff review. So basically, it would be, if, there would be two ways for staff to do the initial review. One would be through board action requesting it, another would be petition from the community.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw?
All right, as the sponsor, let me tell you how we got here. And we even have cemeteries in Eden Hills, just so you know. But basically, I've got a couple subdivisions, particularly in East Cobb and Vinings, that, you're right, the houses were built a long time ago. Most of them are single-story ranch homes, and now the houses that are being built are more of the style being built today. And in many cases, they're not consistent with the neighborhood. And you start getting a neighborhood that just kind of looks odd when you put everything together. And so basically, Dana and his staff, myself, we've been working over the last probably year with various different avenues of trying to get a handle on it. And what it comes down to, and as I mentioned this morning in the agenda meeting, a lot of what you're looking at is very technical. It's elevation drawings. You have folks that are changing the topography of the land, even though they might have to come in because they change it by more than four feet, which is another way over the last couple of years that the board has tried to address this infill and overbuilding. Because it used to be that you could just change the topography of the land whatever way you wanted. Well, then all of a sudden, you get, we ended up with a 21-foot-high wall with a 35-foot pool house on top of it towering over this house. And so that's where you get the staggered walls, and then that's where you got to change them four feet. So this has been an ongoing problem for like the last eight or 10 years, and this is just the latest step in an attempt to try to keep, not necessarily neighborhoods consistent, but not having it where you get these huge disparities between the homes. And, but I'm a huge proponent of individual property owner rights, but at the same time, you know, zoning is all about deciding where does, what, you know, you do to your lot, starting and infringing on mine. And what we have going on in Eden Hills right now is you're starting to have folks infringing on the rights of the people next to them, because when you build, somebody builds a house right next to you, and all of a sudden, all the sunlight and all the light that used to come into your house is no longer there. I mean, it starts becoming a problem. And so, so anyway, that, part of the reason that we have a technical composition of this body would be that, you know, to try to get away from, you know, personal opinions or just colors or styles and things like that. So it's more of a technical review. And the reason I asked to have the Board of Commissioners' input was, almost any one of these neighborhoods, you're not, it's going to be very difficult in a lot of times to get a 50% vote of the neighborhood. And so I think that as, you know, the commissioners, we're supposed to represent the area, and we're all supposed to be a planning body. You know, we're going to hear about the comprehensive plan here shortly. And so the idea was that as a commissioner, if you see an area that you just have concerns about, or you see it starting to go in that direction, that you can bring in front of the board and designate it. And final thing about the commercial, I think we have to be careful. This is not an attempt to take control of things that we don't like. So for example, the whole eastern side of Johnson Ferry Road, a lot of folks over there would love to be able to change the way it looks. When it was initially zoned, it was zoned unrestricted CRC. So almost any commercial property or any kind of commercial use that you can think of can go on those properties, and that's what was granted to them back when it was zoned. And it would be wrong for this board to now try to go in and take that. Instead, what I've tried to do, Commissioner Thompson, before me, was that when something came in for a zoning or a variance, then we would sit down with them and say, okay, you're asking for a change from what you had before. Either it was a variance or a change in zoning, we're going to ask for stipulations. But to just go in there and say, well, we're not going to designate you under this infill, I think that's the wrong use of it, and that's really what it wasn't intended for.
Just have a couple small questions.
Yes, sir.
In Section 134-68 subdivisions, there is a specific line here, "The clerk of the Superior Court shall not file a recorded plat of a subdivision which does not have the approval of the county as required by the section." And then it goes on to say, there's actually a misdemeanor if you're convicted of this. Are we allowed to tell another constitutional officer what they can or can't do?
Let me get my other package. I did not, I did not, I don't have my package with me, sir. Hold on one sec.
Just wondering. You sent me to school.
Okay. So this is Code Amendment Package One, sir, and that is what code section against, sir?
All right, it's 134-68 under subdivisions.
68 under subdivisions.
That is under paragraph, subparagraph A, about two-thirds of the way down, just after a line-out.
Yes, sir. These are, that is existing language in the code.
Well, okay, fine, but that's my question. I mean, can we tell a constitutional officer what they can or can't do? What are you going to do if she says, "The heck with you"?
I think there's probably a better way to do that, as long as you're making the revisions. Just make the revisions and say that it shall not be recorded unless it's appropriate.
I just want to make sure we're not telling the constitutional officer how to do their job.
We will, I'll work with Ms. Dance to have an amendment to that before your vote on that tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. I'm not nitpicking. I just, like I said, I.
Good comment.
You sent me to school for a week, I guess. Wants to know that I stayed awake. And then I think I had one last small question. Oh, go to 134-287 of the donation drop boxes. And I'm very new to this board, so I just want to make sure that there's some patterns of ways we do things here that are acceptable to the board. And subparagraph 134-287, subparagraph 1, subparagraph Roman numeral 4. So the registration should be accompanied by the appropriate registration fee. The fee will, shall be set by a fee schedule adopted and approved by the county manager as amended from time to time. I just want to make sure that, I thought the board set fees, but if I'm wrong about that, I'll just, because I'm new, I just want to make sure we're not taking something out of the hands of the board that's rightfully ours and give it to somebody else.
In some cases, the board has done fees. In some cases, the county manager has given the authorization to approve fees. That's up to the board to decide how you wish to do it.
I'm just asking. Commissioner Otz.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. When we first, when we had this discussion, it might have been a month ago or even outside of the meeting, part of it was because the fee was simply to cover the cost of maintaining the registration. And the only reason we had the registration was, it was an issue, you know, you've seen him where stuff starts piling up around it, and we just wanted to be able to have a way to get in touch with whoever was managing that box. And so I think the reason we did, what the suggestion was for the county manager, was it was really just going to be covering whatever the ultimate cost turns out to be.
That's fine. I'm not trying to, you know, make a bigger thing than it is. Just want to make sure that I'm very protective of the board.
Absolutely.
More questions? Anybody else on the board? Thank you, Dana.
Yes, sir. Item numbers two, sir. I'm going to ask, is on the update on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and I will ask Mr. Jason Gaines and Mr. Philip Westbrook to provide you with that update.
Thank you, Dana. Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm Jason Gaines from Cobb County Community Development, and staff and I are here today to provide you with a brief update on the development of the county's 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As you all are well aware, the county has a comprehensive plan that currently has a horizon year of 2030. We update it annually, and we just did so this past January with our annual Comprehensive Plan Amendment Update Process. That plan was developed originally in 2007. Now, with our 2040 update, it'll be our first major update to the Comprehensive Plan in 10 years. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of the Comprehensive Plan process in general and talk a little bit about the public engagement that we've done with our 2040 Update Process to date. So first, I'll get into the why. The Georgia Planning Act of 1989 mandates that each city and county in the state of Georgia prepare a comprehensive plan. That plan is prepared using standards that are set by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs and are updated from time to time. And despite those updates, the standards are typically based on the size or population of the city or county. So smaller, more rural jurisdictions in the state have a lower set of plan standards as opposed to your more urbanized areas like metropolitan Atlanta. The Comprehensive Plan is directly tied to what's called Qualified Local Government Status, or QLG. And having an approved Comprehensive Plan that meets the minimum standards allows you to maintain your QLG, which makes you eligible for various sorts of federal and state funding. So it's very important to have your kind of plan up to date so that you can maintain QLG status and continue to receive funding that you need to provide services to the citizens of your city or county. So I'll get into the what now. So what is the Comprehensive Plan? Generally, it's policy guidance that promotes a frame- Generally, it's policy guidance that promotes a framework for a stable, healthy, and economically viable community, which makes it attractive to families and residents as well as business interests. As you all have seen, we utilize the Comprehensive Plan to help make decisions in terms of land use when it comes to rezoning and things of that nature. And it, it proves to be a very effective tool in that regard. So now we'll get into the how. It includes policies for growth and future development, primarily through the Future Land Use Map, which is divided into various categories for future land use across residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, and the like. It also has various segments of text which provides specific area guidance based on special conditions in certain geographic areas of the county. Again, it serves as a reference to county officials, landowners, and the development community, kinda like what I said before with the whole thing with rezoning and whatnot. So-
Is there a slide for that?
There is not.
Oh.
Just was kinda elaborating a bit, sir. You didn't want us to read, so I made sure I didn't read what was on the slide. Thank you, sir. So now I'll talk a little bit about community involvement. Like, most typical planning processes, community engagement is a very essential piece to the overall plan development process because it helps the public have a sense of ownership for the plan itself. You know, it's, it's one of those things where you don't want the public to feel as if the county or their city is dictating to them what their land use plan is gonna be. I think we've demonstrated that, you know, we're very pro-property rights in that regard, so we want to make sure that the community has a sense of ownership over our planning activities. So with that said, we've created a varied set of tools to help aid us in our Comprehensive Plan Update Process. One of those items is an informational kiosk, and that's basically a collection of maps and infographics, handouts and other materials that we carry around to various events throughout the county, many of which aren't specifically geared towards any of our activities in community development. But, you know, we just try to go out to be where people are, meet them where they are, and, and pass off this information to them and make it available so that they can see it, get interested, and then come out later when we are having focused meetings that are specific to our planning process, some of which I'll talk about here in a minute. We've created a website, via the county's website, we've created a webpage, I should say, that gives background information to various aspects of the plan. We also post presentations such as this there for the public to view after they're given, as well as documents such as the initial assessment of existing conditions that was created as part of our planning process. Now, again, a little bit into the public meetings. We've had three rounds of public meetings, the first of which was a series of four meetings which focused on identifying strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We basically broke the participants up into small groups and allowed them to kinda chime in on those different aspects of SWOT analysis, or something that's used commonly in this, as well as business applications and whatnot. So we did the SWOT analysis with the first round. On the second round, we did a series of five community workshops where we had various exercises for the public to drop in during the course of a three or four-hour timeframe and, and give us feedback on needs, prioritization, vision, goals, and policies for the plan, as well as recommendations on future land use and growth patterns in the county. The third round was not a full round. It was actually one open-house meeting held at a centralized location. And, and in that instance, we, again, allowed another look, or provided another look at the vision, goals, and policies of the plan, as well as a preview of some of the items that go into the, what's called the Community Work Program, formerly the Short-Term Work Program, but now termed the Community Work Program. And that, that name change was a result of the Department of Community Affairs updating their Comprehensive Planning Minimum Standards. So it's now the Community Work Program, and it is the, the basis of, of how the Comprehensive Plan is implemented over time. We also conducted a 2,500-count survey, telephone survey, utilizing staff from the Kennesaw State Burris Institute. Again, 2,500 responses focused on several questions, and we broke it up into different categories, and we got some really good feedback from that telephone survey as well. There's a steering committee, one in which we oftentimes had their meetings set up in the format of, say, an upcoming public meeting. So if we were gonna have the SWOT analysis in the first round of meetings, we basically made a stakeholder meeting, or set up a stakeholder meeting immediately before that round of meetings began, in which we kinda did a dry run of what the public meeting would be like, just to kinda get a feel for how to approach it and to give the stakeholder community, the stakeholder committee, I'm sorry, an opportunity to give us feedback on how to tweak the proceedings and make the meetings a little bit better. We also did stakeholder interviews, over 40 of them. So, you know, we gave people plenty of opportunity to speak their mind as to what they wanted to see happen for the county in the future. Next slide. Okay. So, this is an example of some of the materials that you would have found at the initial round of public meetings and that second round of community workshops, where you've got people, you know, just leaving us various comments about the vision. You've got them sitting as well in, in groups, as well as it's in a general body, if you will, or audience where we will provide information to them. You also see some of the infographics and the maps that depict some of the socioeconomic information that we use to help kinda create a picture of where the county is and where it might wanna go. Next slide. Okay. And then I'll talk about this one exercise that was conducted during the community workshops round, the second round. And we basically asked people to give us a one-word description of where they felt Cobb County is today, then follow that with a one-word desire as to where they would like to see the county by the year 2040. And these are some of the responses that were received. We talked about wanting to be a walkable community, to have balance and diversity, to be clean and sustainable, family-oriented, et cetera. It runs the whole gamut. And I think, you know, this is a perfect example of how broad and diverse the county is in terms of its physical landscape, as well as of the people who live here. And with that, we will now transition into some more details about our planning process to date. And for that, I'm going to bring up our project manager, Mr. Philip Westbrook.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Philip Westbrook, Planner, Cobb County Community Development. And as Jason alluded to, a lot of community engagement has occurred, and we still have opportunities for more community engagement. But right now, myself, Jason, and the rest of the project management team has been working hard on assembling our draft 2040 Comprehensive Plan. And this will be the plan that will be utilized the most, that will contain the vision, the goals, and the policies. I'm gonna go into the contents of what we expect and intend for that plan to include, and also get into some of the goals, sort of summarize some of the goals, and take a look at our core elements in, including our Community Work Program. So the draft Comprehensive Plan right now, we'll have an introduction that looks into the purpose and the content of the plan. It will include a community profile, it looks at the existing conditions, the data trends, and even some development patterns that are out there in the community. The meat of the plan will be in the elements. There are 12 different elements. These, these 12 elements will include the needs and opportunities which was identified through the SWOT public analysis. They will also include the community goals and policies for each element, and then the Community Work Program, which identifies the individual work items that will contain, be part of each of the element. In addition to the actual draft plan, there will be a set of appendices. I'm not gonna go through each one of them, but I do wanna pull out one of them that, that is up there, the Small Area Policy Guidelines. A lot of you probably recognize these as text amendments. These are dynamic, dynamic information that's in our current Comprehensive Plan that gets updated quite frequently. We're gonna pull those out of the Comprehensive Plan. It's gonna be part of the appendix, and the reason for that is make it easier to use, easier to reference, and easier to update. And that's really the whole focus of this go-around of the Comprehensive Plan, is to make, create a document, design a document that provides easier reading and updating and maintaining. So according to the Department of Community Affairs, there are a set of required elements that each jurisdiction must include into their Comprehensive Plan, depending on if they meet certain criteria. For Cobb County, the required elements are land use, transportation, and housing. In addition to the required elements, there are a set of, or there are optional elements that can be included that, that can supplement the Comprehensive Plan that could be advantageous to the community. We have nine different optional elements that we are including in this plan. Two of those optional elements, Community Facilities and Human Services, contain sub-elements where you'll find information on parks and recreation, water, library, and public health and others. One of the great things about this 10-year update, and that is part of the minimum standards, is if there is an element that has a plan or a strategy in place that directs future guidance, that plan can be a substitute for an element. For example, transportation. And back in 2015, we had updated and, and approved the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. That Comprehensive Transportation Plan can be a substitute for our transportation element, and that's what we fully intend to do. There's no sense in having conflicting goals and policies and inconsistencies. So that will be part of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Now getting into our core elements of, I'm sorry-
One second. Go back one slide.
Certainly.
You said there were, we're gonna take, we're gonna do, adopt nine of the optional elements? There's a, there's, there's 10 here. Which ones are we not, which ones we're not gonna do?
Okay, let's see. Actually, it's intergovernmental coordination. Coordination is under that, so it's-
Okay.
I had to take a look at it myself. Intergovernmental coordination is, is one element. So we get into the community goals. That's another core element. The community goals includes our vision statement, the goals and policies for each of the elements. A lot of these, a lot of these goals you may find look familiar, 'cause some of them are in our existing Comprehensive Plan, and based on the feedback we received or still warranted today. Specifically, managed growth, the community. When we went out there and met with the community, their biggest issue and, and concern and desire was to manage growth. And in particularly preserving the quality suburban communities, neighborhoods out there. Also focusing growth and new, or focus growth where infrastructure is in place and, along in new employment centers, highlighting redevelopment sites to accommodate future population growth, and focusing more development patterns on promoting more of an active living lifestyle. And I know you've heard it many times, and, and so, so have we. The community also would like to see more parkland and open space, increase in affordable housing, quality public safety personnel and training, as well as increased jobs and for people of all skill levels. Other, other goals look into the expanded mobility services for seniors, increasing library hours, continuing effort providing safe water supply and sewer infrastructure. And one of our more popular subject matters was the county and the ability to maintain and, and improve stormwater infrastructure as it relates to flooding downstream of developments. Now getting into the vision, like I said, the vision is part of the community goals. The vision statement paints a picture of what the Cobb County desires to become by promoting, or by establishing and promoting the long-term ideals of the community. This vision statement was put together after our series of steering committee interviews, as well as our public engagement meetings. It was fine-tuned and refined after additional, additional meetings, and it really has two parts. Not only does it create an image of what the community is to become, but it also creates a, creates an image on how the community intends to develop. And that's where we get into our Future Land Use Map and our guidelines that, that describe the different development patterns that are encouraged through, through our Future Land Use designations. And speaking of our future land use, there are several Future Land Use Map changes that were identified by the public, and those are generally located on the map you see on the right. Most of them are land use conflicts. That's where the existing use is developed at a higher intensity or density than what the Future Land Use is recommending. There are also two other additional recommendations that we are looking at. Noonday Creek, just east of Bell's Ferry, there's some public-owned flood plain that we're considering park, recreation, conservation. And then there's also a collaboration with the City of Powder Springs on some property along Powder Springs Road just outside of the city limits that is currently industrial and looking at more of a, more of a Neighborhood Activity Center office-type uses. In addition to the Future Land Use Map changes, there is one particular language addition that we are considering, and that relates to the Regional Activities Center Medium-Density Residential Subcategory. And the RA6 zoning classification is a fairly new zoning classification, and we are considering expanding the MDR subcategory from two and a half to six units per acre to accommodate the RA6 zoning classification. And by the way, all of these Future Land Use changes will come back to you as a, at a later date to make sure that they go through the proper legal process and, and the state requirements. Now getting into our, our last core element, the Community Work Program, pretty much provides specific activities that the county or any other organization that is coordinating with the county intends to undertake during the next five years. These, these projects include, not limited to any planned studies, they include SPOS projects, programs, ordinances, any revision to the ordinances, any changes to the administrative systems. All of these work program items sort of correlate to the goals that, that are, have been identified in, in each of the elements. Couldn't, there's, there's several different, well, there's a lot of Community Work Program items out there. I highlighted the three from our, from our required elements. Land use pretty much focuses on managed growth. That's what we heard from the community. So those, those work program items focus on growth management, as well as doing better way, better job of communicating to the public on, on development aspects of, of community development. Transportation, as I mentioned, that's our transportation plan. So it'd be the five-year work program from the Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And then housing focuses on making sure that we can provide housing for all individuals, as well as increasing the affordable, affordable housing inventory, and, and also coordinating, making sure we can continue that relationship with the Community Development Block Grant Program. So there you have a sort of a very high-level overview of our 2040 Plan. As I said, we are in the process of drafting the document. We will be setting up meetings. In fact, we'll probably start scheduling those meetings later this week to, with you all, to go over the goals, policies, and the Community Work Program. And I will assure you that you'll get that information well ahead of those meetings so that you're prepared with comments and, and feedback. We'll also update the Planning Commission and during their March work session, and then any feedback that we receive, we will make those edits in April. And then we'll come back to you all in May to ask for your permission to submit the final draft to our Regional Development Center, the Atlanta Regional Commission. And of course, before we do that, we'll make sure we have a 30-day public review on our website for the public to, to take a look at it one last time. And then if all goes well in June, we'll, we'll submit the plan to our Atlanta Regional Commission, who will then coordinate with the Department of Community Affairs on making sure that we met all of our minimum standards that, that is required. And then if all really goes well, we'll meet our deadline of October 31st, 2017. So with that, Jason and I will be here for any questions, if you have any.
No questions, thank you. It's, I know that the 10-year one is a lot of work.
Yes.
So appreciate all the efforts you guys are making.
Thank you.
Good job. And thanks also to the volunteers on the Steering Committee that put a lot of time and effort in the public for input. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to echo my thanks as well. I know it's a lot of work, and I'm wondering, you know, one of the things that we run into, particularly in West Cobb, and my district is zoned already, for example, R30, R80, and that someone could come in and build already on that zoning classification. And yet, that scene is out-of-control growth, as opposed to, you know, we didn't have to approve it because it's already zoned that way. Somehow or another, we need to communicate that to the public. And then, I in fact, look at the OSC, Open Space Community One, as a way to have more input into that as we go forward. They get a little more density, and we get a lot more green space. To me, that's a better alternative than even building it as its own. But did some of those discussions come up during that, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir. And I just wanted to let you know that one of the things that we have in the middle of this month, having a, one of the new positions that the board has granted us as Communications Coordinator, one of the things that we're going to be doing with this particular new individual is creating a community development newsletter, as well as a Facebook page, so that we can really try to help get more information out to the community, particularly about things exactly like you just talked about, Commissioner. So we intend on doing exactly as you asked.
Well, that would help us all, I think, if we could do that. Thank you.
Mr. Cupid?
Just want to point out, you said you'd be getting well ahead of the commissioners for their meetings. March is in two days, and your chart says March. Your idea well ahead and mine, obviously, are different. My schedule's pretty well booked up already through the middle of March, so if you're going to get me in March, you better hustle.
Yes, sir.
All right, okay.
We'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, great presentation, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we're going to take a short recess, about five minutes, and then come back and finish off the last of the tabs. Hey, thank you. Welcome back, and let's go to a tab number three. And I believe Mr. Hughes has the, has the floor.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. The, this is Michael Hughes, Finance and Office of Economic Development. The purpose of this agenda item is just to provide some information regarding some proposed next steps for the recently completed Economic Development Process and Procedures Assessment. By way of brief background, in 2016, the county engaged the services of the Pendleton Group to assist with conducting a comprehensive analysis of our economic development processes and practices. The results of that analysis were, was completed in late 2016, and those were shared with the Board of Commissioners in November. They identified a series of observations and next steps for future consideration. And this afternoon, I want to pick up on some of those next steps for the board's consideration. I do not have a PowerPoint, but I can refer you to the attachment that's part of this agenda item. It's on page 15 of your agenda book. You'll see there is a series of next steps, recommendations. There are six bullets there, the first of which just calls for the establishment of a small committee, as recommended in that assessment, would be led by the Economic Development Division Manager, and they would be convened to review and analyze the assessment observations, and also craft an implementation strategy. The composition of that committee is, is eight individuals, Cobb County Economic Development, Finance and Development, Community Development, a representative from the Board of Commissioners, representative from the chairman's office, and then a representative from a local municipality, and also the Georgia Department of Economic Development, and then a Board of Education, and then the Cobb Competitive Edge. And then the next bullets just explain the process that the committee would use in terms of prioritizing assessment, observations, meeting with the board members individually to discuss and review and provide some feedback on some of the priorities that are identified by the small committee. And then they would share and discuss that feedback from the board, and then come up with a final priority ranking of, and formulate a preliminary implementation strategy. And then we would conduct another work session, as we are doing now, just to go over and review and finalize the recommended next steps for the assessment. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Any comments from the board members? I'd just like to say one thing. I've discussed the need for a new approach to our economic development program here in the county. The reality is, is that I've heard from many different directions that we need to, we need to grab, we need to go out and actively seek economic, opportunities to grow economically in the county. And I'm not sure that, that a one-man band is the way to do that. And I'll be, and I really mean that I have, you're doing a great job there, Mr. Hughes, but I think we need to approach this differently. And it starts because of the fact that we are, we now have a very big partnership with SunTrust Stadium, and, and, you know, by, by connection with Battery Park. We have some huge opportunities here in this county that are already here that we need to advertise. I can start on the south part of the county with Six Flags. I can go north up to what's doing up in KSU with their sports program, Water, Water World. I mean, there are so many opportunities here that we need to be telling people what's going on in this county and advertise the, the, the chance to bring your family here, or just come here for a long weekend or a long week and do things. We have the Galleria and the wonderful things they do there. So I, I think we really need to stake, look in a different way, how to get, get this county out on the map in a different, in a bigger, in a bigger universe. And but in order to do that, we need to start looking at ways to reorganize and relook at how we're going to do this. I've had presentations by Cobb Tourism and Travel about what they'd like to do to be part of that. Obviously, the Chamber has their approach, their edge program is hugely successful, and I'm a big proponent of that. But the reality is, is that the Chamber has its own agenda, and we have our agenda. And there are things that are mutually overlapping, but we, they're not the same. So we can't have another agency running our economic program here. So I think we need to, I just want to let the board know here that we need to start being thinking bigger about this. Obviously, we're not going to do it right out of, out of the gate, because it's going to involve some serious study, and then, of course, the famous line, money. But I think we need to be, we need to be honest about this, that if we're going to continue this growth in Cobb County, we have to continue to develop. But we have to also do that smartly, and by using the existing resources we have in this county and the opportunities, and then look to the futures, what we can do to bring, to bring people here, to use our facilities, but also to live, to live, recreate, work, and pursue their dreams. So I'm looking for big things out of you, Mr. Hughes.
Sure.
And I'll be working with some people here that I know to partner with you in an informal way to hopefully get, get through this agenda forward.
I look forward to it, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, tab four. I believe that's Mr., Mr. Hagler with the, with the nepotism issues?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Chairman.
Not with you personally, I just want to.
Yeah, no, sir. I apologize in advance. My PowerPoint is, is long, but I'll try to move fast. So, um, I'm Tony Hagler from the Human Resources Department, and I have a presentation today to discuss the county's nepotism policy. You'll go to the next slide. Cobb County is committed to maintaining open and competitive.
We're not reading from the slides.
Okay. I mean, we're open to maintaining open and competitive and merit-based personnel selection, employment practices consistent with the county's, with federal law of transparency and county policies. Up on the screen, you'll see a number of policies that have been approved and implemented by the board over the years, including the classification policy and the compensation policy, EEO policy, the EEO plan. Okay. This presentation will highlight the pros and cons and staff feedback regarding the nepotism policy and the proposed changes. Next slide.
I'm giving you that first slide.
Okay.
But I'm not giving you the second slide.
I'll do my best, sir. A lot of information I didn't have memorized, but yes. The county's, as you can see, the nepotism policy is, is defined as favoritism and partiality toward family members. The county's policy is actually an anti-nepotism policy, or a limited nepotism policy. So it's intended to control favoritism or partiality shown towards family members in the, for management, safety, and legal, and other reasons. The policy that we have is essentially now was one in 1995 that was implemented for a number of reasons related to hiring and employment data at the time, and the makeup of our workforce, and to put in provisions that will avoid conflicts of interest, favoritism, family conflicts, claims of harassment, and claims of discrimination. Some of the things that we'll cover today are some considerations for EEO and federal contract, favoritism and partiality, family conflict, considerations of marriage and existing employees, and then some conclusions and some recommendations. In preparing the presentation today, I had asked for feedback from the management team, so some of their comments are included in the presentation as well. The county follows the equal employment opportunity provisions provided by the federal government in our employment processes. Part of that is, as all employers are, to provide our workforce data every two years in an EEO for report that shows the gender and the race and national origin of our makeup of our workforce. Additionally, the county maintains an EEO plan because of the federal funding that we receive throughout the county. That was most recently updated in December by the Board of Commissioners. A copy of it was distributed to the board for the presentation, so you'll have a copy of that. The reporting's mandatory, and the data is used to show our underutilization of our workforce as compared to the community that we serve. Currently, in the current data, our workforce shows underutilization of women and minorities in the areas up at the screen that are different areas under the EEO C, EEO plan provisions. Next slide. One of the pros of nepotism limitation is the policy imposes limitations on the selection of family members, or hiring or employment decision promotes a goal that the hiring and selection processes and open, are open in a decision based on its nondiscriminatory and merit-based factors. The goal and the practice are particularly important when the EEO data shows underutilization of a protected class. One of the management feedback comments I received is up on the screen. Our department has made tremendous strides in overcoming the appearance of the good old boy system of employment and promotion. Our processes have withstand legal challenge, and it's been supported by the courts. Inserting blood or marital relations in the department could reverse the progress that has taken many years to achieve. But putting back in the perception of favoritism or, or partiality, that some hiring decisions and promotions are made based on those, or could be based on those. Yes, sir.
So by saying that, what you're really saying is, what you're really saying is- Is that the good old boy system still lives in Cobb County? Because that's, that's how that would work.
It, it could be, yes, sir, if the, if the policy was changed to allow the employment, that those perceptions could come back. Yes, sir.
But the perception's not the reality. The reality would be that there is a good old boy system in Cobb County. Is there a good old boy system in Cobb County?
I, I don't believe there is a good old boy system. I believe that we have made a lot of changes over the years that have, have made changes in our employment and our promotional processes that have taken away that image.
So if that's the case, then that's not an issue anymore?
I think the fear is that changing the policy could return back to those. That would be the fear of, of the comment from management.
So if we said we had a good old boy and a good old girl network system, would that meet the EEO standards?
I don't, I don't know that it would, it would beat the EEO standards. No, sir.
I'm sorry?
You say the fear is, whose fear is that?
That was one of the comment, management feedbacks that I had received from one of the managers, sir. That was one of, yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Next slide. Kind of the limitations is that qualified candidates for selection or promotion may be excluded from employment. Qualified female and minority candidates for employment or promotion may be excluded from employment opportunities as well.
Go back, next time.
Okay.
So how, how would, how would that, how would nepotism insert itself into this? How would, how would nepotism affect it if you're excluded from employment opportunities? If you're being a candidate for selection or promotion, that's a process. So if it's a process, I mean, you'd have to insert somebody from outside the process into that process to make it a good old boy system.
Well, this would be, if you change the policy. I mean, not, I'm not changing the policy if you left it at it is. So you're, you're leaving it as it is, you're leaving out some candidates potentially. That's what that's saying.
Well, that's, that's the issue about nepotism, all right, is that you're putting somebody in there that clearly reflects that it's a fraternal or bloodline that would be clearly manifest in your selection of, of the person. All right. But the point I'm making here is if you have a process, it would never come to that.
It, it should not come to that, no, sir. No.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. Next slide.
And, no, I'm not done.
Okay.
Qualified female and minority candidates, in this day and age, it's still, I mean, I'm not saying that it's a perfect world, but in this day and age, in our system, we have this actively going on right now.
Yes, Chairman.
We do.
Yes. And I can't say Cobb County does, but it's a real fear of many organizations still today. If you look at general employment data across race, if you look at stats across race, not, not saying Cobb County, I'm just saying generally, you will see disparity when it comes to certain populations. I think that's reflected in the EEOP policy that was put in front of us, where you see assessment of data, and it's just, I understand where we're trying to go with this policy.
I just think, I just think Cobb's different. I just, that's my sense, all right? I'm not, I'm not saying that across the United States, or Georgia, or really that this is a perfect world. I just think that, given what we have right now, where we are, the concerns that are being raised are legitimate. I just don't see them being reflected in what we've done here, and what we tried to do to, to offset all these concerns over the last, you know, generation. So, that's all I'm saying.
Chairman, in the prior slide, you know, this, this back and forth, it seems so aggressive to me, and it's very disconcerting. If you go back to the prior slide, you know, it asks for management feedback. A manager, you have an actively sitting manager that's providing that. And, you know, I'll just share, there's, I can't say what the reason was for the structure of the presentation the way that it is, but even listening to the feedback provided, it provides cover for this manager to see their comments and quotations, because they probably would feel uncomfortable letting the board know that these concerns are active.
Sure.
And I just think that, I'm, I'm still open. I haven't made a decision one way or another, but just even coming out of a private organization or a company before working in the public sector where nepotism was an issue and it had to be addressed, these issues are real today in the 2000s. And I don't think that, while Cobb County has made strides to do a lot of things in a positive way, I don't think that we are completely unique in having nepotism potentially be a concern in a large organization.
Question, please.
I'll let Mr. Watt first, and then I'll come down the board.
Um, I, I think we're kind of mixing apples and oranges here. We're talking about nepotism, which means family member. Race has nothing to do with it, because if race was involved, you have to have someone of that minority or that race to, in order to have nepotism. So I mean, you know, the whole issue here is talking about nepotism, which is family members, and that's it. And, and I think, you know, this, this is fine, this is a bunch of numbers, this has nothing to do with nepotism. I mean, we're supposed to be talking about nepotism, and this whole thing here is about, yeah, EEO. And, and to, to put the two together, they're unrelated. The nepotism policy, I, I just, there is no way that you can tell me that we have our anti-nepotism policy to become more integrated with minorities and male and female hiring. They're, they're just not related. And I think we're going, we're, we're having this big long discussion and all these slides and everything, but it's not addressing the issue of nepotism. It's talking about EEO.
I hear you.
And so I just, we need to kind of stay on topic. Commissioner Bro.
I agree. And, I mean, the comment is inserting blood or marital relations. It's, it's family members, or blood-related is what they're referring to. And to me, that was what I thought nepotism was about.
Not, nothing to do with qualified race or females.
Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Woodford?
Sure. I assume all the managers had an opportunity to comment on this policy?
Yes, sir.
How many managers do we have?
I think we have about 28, 30 managers.
28 managers in the whole county?
Yes, sir. Of, of the BOC policy, yes, sir, that I sent information to. The department heads, I'm sorry, I didn't send to every manager.
All right. So was this from a department head or from a manager?
A department head.
Okay, so out of 28, we had one comment?
Um, yes, sir.
Did you get other comments?
I had other comments. There were very few comments that I got back in preparation of the presentation, but yes, sir, there were other comments.
Okay, so not only are we talking about EEO, which I agree, has nothing to do with nepotism in my mind, we're taking the feedback of one of the 28 department heads, and you- and using that as a basis for you to justify not doing it?
No, he's just.
Well, I'm just saying.
No.
But I think it's, to me, the bigger thing is that we have a, we, managers know they can make comments like this.
Yeah.
All right? Openly, and we take it at face value, all right? We're not looking for the person made this, that they can, they feel comfortable enough in the board here that they can speak openly and freely and we'll take it for the intent that it was worth. I think that's the real thing that I commend this manager for doing. I think the rest of the managers hopefully will feel the same way. But I also get Commissioner Weatherford's point here is that they all had the opportunity to comment. And some of them did, and there are some of them, I guess, whatever's happening there, they're comfortable with. I don't know, that's just what I would agree with.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Sure.
I think nepotism is a complex policy and issue that really gets to bias. And I think bias can be broad, it can be with respect to race, but as is being observed, it could be towards a lot of other factors. I think race tends to be an observed bias in many organizations, which could follow because family members or related blood family members may particularly be of the same race. However, I don't think race is the sole consideration when it comes to nepotism. And as much as it may not be causing issues, it could be correlated, it could be correlated to some issues. And I really feel like, you know, we are putting a lot of onus and pressure, I feel a lot of pressure discussing this up here on our human resource manager and our department heads. We have put a compensation board in place with, has some HR representatives and managers who are speaking to a lot of issues, you know, and it would be great to get some varying perspective on nepotism and what it is today than to be having, to me, a very charged conversation about this. And I don't know if, I don't know why I'm feeling so uncomfortable, but I'm feeling very uncomfortable up here, hearing the conversation about this. And I just think it would be very helpful to get some feedback and cover even for Tony, because he's a manager in the organization, so he's having to take a lot of these questions personally. And I think just having some objective analysis from somebody in human resources can provide feedback on everybody's end, it can provide feedback to self-support Commissioner Weatherford and Ains' points and some other things that are part of this presentation, but I'm just,
Mr. Chairman, could he go to the recommendations?
We were asked to bring back pros and cons. If we just take every comment without seeing the recommendation or the direction we're seeking, it's very uncomfortable for a lot of my managers to come forward. They'll make a statement, but they do not, I can tell you, most of my managers do not want to be identified with this because they don't know where the bullet stands. Okay.
Go to the last slide. Yeah. So the recommendation we'd ask for the board is to get your feedback direction on moving forward. What, whether to maintain the policy that we currently have or to present a revised policy for the board's considerations. But some of the parameters we would recommend to be included in such a policy for limited nepotism would be to make sure it's defined what family members are, require that employees disclose family relationships to other persons affiliated with the county, such as their manager, elected official, department head. Specify the circumstances under which family members are ineligible for employment. Consider whether and under what circumstances employees who become relatives after the date of hire should be under, subject to different rules. Specify other activities which an employee may not participate if a family member is involved, such as interview panels where a family member is an applicant for a higher promotion. And consider what limitations are appropriate for specific departments. For example, hiring or promotional situation where a department cannot ensure that the two employees will not work together at the same location, that one does not directly supervise another, and they will not supervise serving the same chain of supervision whereby they can have influence, decisions are relative to the other. Sorry, and if, if the same, then what measures would be in place for, to ensure there's no influence?
So these are your recommendations that we need to come up with, or is this something your department comes up with?
Seeking direction, Lord, Commissioner, by the recommendations for what should be in the policy, at least the parameters to cover.
I believe when we, you know, we, some of the members of the board requested this, one of the things I requested was best practices from other departments. And I believe you went out and did some of that, at least I hope you did, and that it must be working in other places, including just across the street, which has much more smaller departments than we do. And I know that it works in the armed services, it works in a lot of places. So, you know, part of my original agenda item was a proposed policy that basically just added a few things in there. None of these were in that policy. These are things that you think should be in the policy if we so go forward with the nepotism or policy or removing the nepotism policy, then I would expect department heads in or HR to come up with what the verbiage should be, because I certainly can't come up with that.
And we could come up with the verbiage, sir, yes, I'm just saying, recommend what should be included in the policy. Yes, sir.
My recommendations is whatever you think should be included if we eliminate it. That's, I want it to be as tight as it can, but I also don't want to lose qualified candidates for any position in the county if we can avoid that, simply because of something that I think is antiquated. That's just my thoughts.
When we first started discussing this, some of the larger departments, well, first of all, the policy is, they can't work in the same department in some of the larger, like water or DOT now, correct?
Currently, no employees that are related can work in the same department, no matter what the size of the department.
Okay, so there's no nepotism in DOT and water?
Unless it's grandfathered from before 1995.
Okay. So we were looking at trying to be consistent throughout. So whatever changes we make need to apply to all departments, not just water or public safety or DOT or whoever?
I think that's the decision of the board.
Is that the consensus of the board? That it would be applied on?
It would have to be a consistent policy, right.
I think if we should be open and considering it being applied in individual agencies. I mean, the only one that's come up to push this forward is public safety, so I don't see why we can't consider it uniquely. That might even be a pilot place to consider it.
But the policy in place prohibits that now.
Right.
In water or DOT or any other, and public safety.
Okay, so that would need to be modified to permit, I'm just saying, let's be open is my thought, it doesn't necessarily have to be blanket to cover the entire organization.
I agree with Mr. Cupid, but I think the agenda item that was pulled stated only public safety and the rest would be reviewed as they come about and implemented there, which appears to be the ones that are requesting it now. But I have no problem with it being worked on in any department in the county. With certain provisions, I think it should be different work locations, different chain of commands or management structure. And that would limit it certainly in our county to a certain few departments where they all don't work together on the same floor. But I would certainly want to go forward with this implemented county law.
Yeah. If I may piggyback off of the commissioner's comments, Chairman.
Sure.
You know, if there's consideration by agency, it may be driven by it being a managerial decision because this impacts management processes. And I really just think it's very important for the manager to be engaged in this process and to consider whether or not this is appropriate for their agency. Right now, we are hiring a new direct, or police chief, you know, even that might be something that's considered as part of this process, so we are not putting this type of significant modification in that department where we're about to change the head. They may have some opinions about it and it may, and, you know, it may complement, but it may not complement how they desire to manage the department. So I think that's something that should be considered in how we move forward. One thing that I see recommendations here, but part of the reason this was pulled is because we were, the direction from the last work session was to provide a pros and cons analysis, and I don't know if you were going to do that, but seeing recommendations is very difficult for me without seeing pros and cons, because to me, looking at what the positives and challenges are, to me, helps to inform what the policy direction should be. So, you know, I don't know if you skipped a number of slides, but it's very difficult for me to assess any policy that's being performed without that type of assessment, especially, you know, since that was asked in consideration of drafting the policy.
We did skip a lot of slides with some of that information in there. And when the initial policy was created, I was not here, and it was revised a couple of times. Over the years, we had a policy that was developed in the eighties, then the nineties, ninety-five. And a lot of it was related around the bigger departments, reading, we changed the policy. And Chief Heaton, I mean Director Heaton, received a lot of feedback from his managers. He's prepared to speak to that, this all the way down. It's some of the precinct commanders, battalion chiefs and others, but it's up to the board. We take the rights and the board's set policy, but Chief Director Heaton is prepared to speak, but we can go back or we can buy you a copy of these pros and cons and other things if that's the board's direction.
It would just be.
Or we can show them, either way.
Either or, I don't know if you have it in your PowerPoint, is, are there pros and cons listed?
There are some pros and cons that were in the presentation, yes, ma'am.
It would be helpful to see.
That's true.
If I can make a suggestion, I mean.
What do I do? Yes, he's going, I mean, I would like to see, okay.
I'm just gonna let him come.
Okay, sure.
We can go to the slides.
Okay.
Well, what I was just thinking is that, since the recommendations aren't exactly what I think Commissioner Weatherford was looking for, and there's a lot of material in Tony's slides, if I can make a suggestion that we be given his PowerPoint and that Tony walk the hall and come and talk to us?
Yeah, I think, first of all, we probably bit off too much of this apple. The thought was, the real objective here is to make sure we can recruit as much of the best human capital we can get in the county to work in the county. And you have a nepotism policy that's too restrictive, then you're starting to filter out a lot of the best people who want to come work here. To me, you know, you look at companies that have a general nepotism policy. I understand where Commissioner Cupid is coming from, where you want to allow the managers that have the flexibility to run their departments, and yet you run the danger there of every manager sets a different standard and you have one organization with five different standards in each department. That's a danger. But in the interest of moving this ahead, okay, the initial issue was with the public safety department. And now that we've gotten this far, clearly there's a lot more to this than meets the eye, but that's the purpose for these kind of discussions. So what I'd like to suggest is that we allow Mr. Hagler to walk the hall with this PowerPoint slide. But I'm willing, in the interest of moving it ahead, that if we're just going to resolve the issue in one department for now, I can live with that. I'm not putting this up for a vote, but I can live with that, in the interest of moving this ahead. I don't want to stop the whole thing because we've taken it from Mr. Heaton's department and tried to resolve all the issues here, and in the process of doing that, we stopped Mr. Heaton from moving ahead on an area which we already know has recruiting issues. So I'm not interested in adversely impacting on his ability to do his job. So I think that, now that's not a bad idea, I think that works for everybody. We can go ahead and if you want, we can show some of the recommendations right now, I'm fine with that. And then walk the hall, all right? And we'll come back with this later. Once the commissioners, I'll poll the commissioners, once they're comfortable, bring it back in a format that they could, that they're comfortable with, and we'll bring this back up again, okay? But I'm not saying we're kicking the can down the road. We have to get, we have to get Chief Heaton's issues addressed and, you know, promptly. So if you could go to those parts of the pros and cons and do that over, how long do you think that'll take you, ten minutes?
Just a few minutes, sir. I'll try to move quickly through them.
Okay, well, I'm very conscious of some time schedules here for some of the commissioners, but I don't want to, I don't want to rush us through it either.
Mr. Chairman, could we not take Commissioner Hartz's recommendation and provide a copy of the PowerPoint and then walk the halls and then?
Well, that's right up to Commissioner Cupid.
Okay.
Because you wanted to show the pros and cons.
Yes, I was curious to see the pros and cons. I mean, we listed the recommendations, and I just don't know how we get to that without understanding what the pros and cons of it are.
Well, he said it would take a couple of minutes, we can do that. All right. Tony?
Okay. We go to the next one. We did that one already. The next one, I'm sorry, sir, I can't see the slide there, I jumped around. The pro of the nepotism limitations are the accusations of favoritism and partiality and selection of family members may result in unfavorable treatment of the selectee and morale issues and potential litigation. And I got a number of comments kind of related to that one. Do you want me to read through those or are they up on the screen?
Yeah, we can read it, you don't have to read it. Okay.
Next slide. Other conflicts or pros and cons were morale issues, issues of loyalty. Confidentiality was one that I heard a couple of times, it was breaches of confidentiality may result from divulging workplace matters and family conversations. We do have a number of employees that have access to sensitive information. One of the related comments is below from one of the county management staff.
That is. Okay.
Next slide, the pro of nepotism limitations is enforcement of current policy prohibiting nepotism eliminates this concern. Alternatively, a preventive measure to address concern would be to not permit employment of related persons at the same work location. And a couple of comments from management related to that.
Okay.
Next slide. The current policy requires that if individuals are employed in the same department they desire to get married, then one must elect to resign, or the person must, with the least seniority must be separated. The county's practice has been to find employment for the other individual. One of the pros of that is that married individuals would have, are seen as having a commonality of interest. Some of the cons of nepotism limitations is the forced resignation of the current employee results in a loss of training and experience to the county, potential loss of morale and loyalty based on termination of the, termination for reasons that's unrelated to merit. Treatment of employees based on their marital status differs from treatment of individuals who are unmarried but involved in a similar committed personal and family relationship. Limitations may prevent employees from marrying based on fear of losing their employment.
Okay.
Okay, so now we're good.
You know, that's all well and good, but we know that the practice is that these employees are committed to each other, they're just physically not getting married, so they don't have a marriage certificate. So all of this, I mean, yeah, you can say their pros are cons, but the fact of the matter is, the employees have found a way around it, and so that changes nothing. I mean, you know, all we're doing is preventing two folks from getting married, because the policy basically says that they're married, which means they have to have a marriage certificate. But, you know, many of the folks involved are committed or do commitment ceremonies and stuff like that, and as long as they don't get a marriage license, then nothing's different. And so all these things that we say, you know, are. Well, I'm just telling you what's going on.
Okay.
Sure, Commissioner Booth.
To me, rather than doing away with nepotism policy period, why can't we look at not allowing them to report if they're family members and the definition is in our current policy? But why can't we look at, rather than? But why can't we look at, rather than not working in the same department or for the county, why can't they just not report to that family member or in the same fire station or precinct or division of a large department?
That's exactly what I proposed. That was what the original agenda item was.
I would be.
My location and chain of command.
Support of that.
You know, and the other thing is, I mean, I can understand a manager or a precinct commander or all the, or fire, you know, all the different people worrying about these things, and these are valid concerns. But we're trying to, we're trying to do their job for them. To me, I think we have enough professional people in management positions that they can handle these issues without any issues. If they can't, they're not in the right position. So the whole idea here is what started all this is we need trained public safety officials and employees to stay with us. We have other public safety people in other departments and other counties and other cities and other locations that want to work for our county but can't. Therefore, we already have at least some, I know, that will come here. So, you know, this policy from the eighties is now keeping us from doing that. And it's also, as you and I know, Director, we've had to do some things because those people got married. And, you know, all I'm trying to do is, is figure out a way to handle that. I certainly didn't mean to cause an uproar or to make more work for management that I think should be able to handle this. And it's done in other places, places smaller than us, places enlarging us. With, I won't say without issues, but certainly it's handled. So why can't we handle it? That's, this is my question, so.
Well, first, let me, let me say that this is a touchy subject. It has been for many years, particularly in public safety, where it's tradition, a lot of places, very much like the military, where you follow in your parents' footsteps. I mean, it truly is a tradition, if you will. At the same time, and I'm not here to preach for or against, it will come with some issues if, if we change the policy. Your question was, what happens? How come we can't put them in the same chain of command? Well, that, that's great for a period of time, until you get so many people, eventually someone's gonna be of rank somewhere in that chain of command. So, and don't think, you can call it good old boy or whatever, but don't think that influence of a person with rank doesn't have influence over decisions that are made below them, whether they're in that chain of command or not. That does happen, and it will, it will happen. So, I, I, you know, we talk about morale. Morale, it works both ways. For the folks who think this is a great thing and a tradition, now my kids can work here, and that's great. I mean that. I think that's great, because we do have a lot of people I think would be great employees. At the same time, for the people who doesn't have a brother or sister in the department, and they see someone move up, that can cause a morale issue on their side, to the point where they say, I'm gonna go somewhere, I have a fair chance. Whether that's real or not, perception sometimes is real. And I hate to say it that way, but it truly is, and especially when you start getting into operations and where people are getting promoted or not getting promoted. You know, the, the, the testing that we do today for hiring, the testing that we do for promotion has taken care of, of some of that, some of those issues that may arise. Because you've got to, when you get to go through the hiring opportunity here, it, it really is a thorough background check, and, and if you're not qualified, you're not gonna get hired. I don't care who you're related to. Same thing pretty much for the promotions, until there's a list. Once the promotions are done, there's a list of people. At that point, it's up to command staff, particularly at appointments. It's up to command staff. It's not by just grade of any test that you've taken. It's also the work that you've done. So that's another thing where someone could perceive someone's getting a foot up. So, discipline, I can tell you, nepotism is manageable in larger departments. As the fire chief and as the deputy chief of fire, many years, there were brothers, uncles, fathers and sons that I've had to manage. Bringing drama into the workplace does occur. I remember some time back, I had to terminate one employee. His brother remained here, hated me in this department for the rest of his career. And would use anything he could to make any one of us look bad. So those things are real. They will happen, but it's, will it cause the departments to fall? No, I don't think so. That's why I say it's manageable. And I'll finish with exactly what you said. You have to have the right people in the management arena to make this happen. Otherwise, those things, what nepotism does is crack the door for that possibility to happen. And if you even read the AJC report, and I'm not sure if Tony sent you that from 2014 about what's happening in the metro Atlanta area, that's one of the things you see. Right or wrong, perceived or not, it will give the opportunity for the door to crack open for someone to make an accusation that this occurred or that it actually did occur. So, those are things, the way I look at it, is it manageable? Yes, we can manage it. Particularly in the large departments, I'm speaking for public safety. I can't speak for every department. I've managed, managed it before. But I, I, you do need to know that it can come with perceptions of unfairness. And whether they come up or not, will only, time will tell and your managers. You've got to have the right managers in place, so.
Well, clearly, we have to bring Tom Selleck and Blue Bloods here.
Yeah.
I just had to bring some levity here, Sam. And as far as not being liked, run for office. And thirdly, this is why, this is why we had this discussion. This is an issue where, it's 2017. I remember when I was, you know, going to the police, the civilian academy. Four out of 100 people, that's all that make the cut, that could into the police department. Four out of every 100 apply. So, it's, again, I go back, it's not a perfect world. If, I think we had every four of those were all the same family members. I'd probably obviously have a concern. But I go back, each, each one of us here has a different standard of what we're looking against. I'm looking for hiring the best quality people and then trusting the managers, like Commissioner Weatherford said, to, you know, to make a fair decision. Because if they make one that does, that isn't, it'll certainly, you know, resonate on down the line. But I think we're, I think we're good. I think we need to come back with a couple of things. We're gonna, Tony's gonna walk the hallway, but he also needs to bring us that recommended policy that we can chew on and then come back to here, to go back here to vote on it. And I'll work with the county manager and the other commissioners on what a good time to do that is. But I hope you realize that by the extent of this discussion, by how seriously we take this issue.
Sure.
And even though I might have one approach on it, the other four commissioners do too, and we're gonna get a better product out of this.
Absolutely.
So thank you for your time.
So, thank you.
Chairman, it may be helpful too for the county manager to help with that because I think you, were you not involved in, in iteration of it?
Absolutely, yeah. As, as Ms. Hankston knows, I worked through him.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, tab five. I think we're gonna have Ms. Dr. McMorris. You'd get your final, your chance to excel here. Oh, come on.
Afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Managers. On January 24th, you, the board expressed interest in hearing from the departments regarding their 17, 18 budget request. I've provided handouts for you. Basically, this is the Public Service Agency Administration Unit's budget request. It's the legal sheets in front of you. And then there's a smaller sheet that is just providing the variances between what was adopted versus what is requested. Dr. McMorris is gonna run through her presentation of her budget requests. We, we provided some history there. But before she does that, I want to call, at least bring the board's attention. Personal services is one of the things that the departments have almost no control over. Yes, they can request new positions or funding or defunding of certain positions, but that's not what we typically go through when we have these discussions because that's obviously set through HR and regarding what the market's doing for our benefits. What we typically walk through is all operating in capital requests, which is exactly what Dr. Morris is gonna speak to. We did add a separate slide at the end because we have some unique opportunities the last couple of years with funding or unfunding of vacancies. So that is on there, but she'll, she'll get into that as she goes through her budget. This is our first attempt at doing what you request, so any feedback that you have, we, we'd be happy to take it and use, incorporate that in any future presentations. Thank you. I did. I even made it bigger, just like you asked. Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, County Managers. My fellow colleagues who are out there watching me be the guinea pig for this. I can assure you of two things. First, the $250,000 that did not go to the collaborative did not go to me. And second, I don't have anyone in my office that's related to me. Okay, come on, it's five, almost five o'clock. Okay, so before you, I think you all had requested a three-year spending history. And so you can see 14, 15, FY16 with regard to personal services operating in the total budget. So in FY16, my operating budget was $20,780. In FY18, it dropped just a tad, to $19,780. And since we adopt on a biennial, it's the same in 18. So one of the things I wanted to share with you before getting into where the variances are is that we were told from the very beginning not to add anything to our budgets pretty much because we knew that the military rate was not going to be raised or kept the same. So at the end of the day, a lot of times there may be needs, but we just didn't ask for it because we knew that they weren't gonna be funded anyway. So with that being said, particularly for departments that are with, within the agency, so like libraries and parks and senior services. But for my budget, for the most part, it will go to the slide that's in front of you. You'll see that what was adopted in '17 is $19,780. What was requested was $25,030. So what then did I ask for that I didn't get? The bullet points to show you that there was additional training and registration fees, increased travel training and business, expanded memberships and promotions. So what I wanted to share with you is the variance is about $5,250. And where that came in was requests for things like professional development. I like to have an annual retreat with my staff and bring in someone professional with a background in training and development in lots of different areas and have that person work on morale and courageous conversations and you name it. So one of the things I wanted to do was to bring in someone to do that. Well, that was one of the areas that did not make the final cut. One of the things I had asked to do was to become certified in John Maxwell training so that I could partner with HR and do some middle management level training as my doctorate is in leadership and organizational change. And I see that there's a gap in training with particular managers that I felt that I could help with HR to provide for staff. That was another area that was not funded. When we looked down at expanded memberships and promotions, I think I had asked for about $300 in that area. And in that particular line, it would have included things like Juneteenth, where we are often asked to participate in a booth. And I didn't have the funds to, to pay that $100 or a, a tablecloth that had public services on it so that it would list all the departments that was in public services. So to be brief, but yet specific, the $5,250 that was requested but not funded included things like accountable equipment, $500, professional services, $500, $100 for my telephone and wireless bill. And the most of it was training and certifications or memberships to organization, professional organizations that I felt would benefit my agency. Any questions?
I think you, just one small suggestion, next time just have the chart that reflects the unfunded deficiencies. So that way you have an idea what, and money for me visually, alright?
And, and we are happy to give that to you. I think we were told to keep it very high level.
Well, it's fine. No, but you had $5,000, so you could just said A, B, C without using specific dollar amounts. But you give the board an idea of what it is you can't do because you don't have the, the resources to do it. But other than that, it's perfect for me. Mr. Weatherford?
Help me a little bit.
I would just like to say one other thing too. If you notice on that particular slide that's up, I did not have any vacant positions and I did not have any positions that were unapproved. Other department, again, this is a small budget. Other departments, on the other hand, you will see slides and information where there were unfunded positions or vacancies that were not funded. So just for my budget analysis that we're not.
So this is for you and people that report to you, not the departments they manage?
No, this is just for my department.
Which is?
Which is public services. Each of my managers has his or her own budget.
Okay, so we shorted you $5,000?
Yes, you did.
Well, we didn't fund it. We didn't.
So if you add all your departments together, what's the total budget?
That would be enormous. If I added all of my departments together, for the, the, the entire.
That you're responsible for.
Oh my gosh, I don't want to tell you the wrong number, but it just.
The point is, this may be a test case, but, you know, I'd rather talk about the, all of those, and I assume we will eventually, rather than $5,000 because in the great scheme of things we've gone through today, that's pretty not anything.
I agree.
Okay.
But.
So I'm, I guess I'm confused about what we're doing.
I think going forward, the county manager did recommend that there would be a small agency and a larger one so that we could get to those. But the directive was to start with a small one to show what was adopted and what was requested and then talk a little bit about the variance.
But your department is one of the larger ones.
It is.
To her defense, we just wanted the format, make sure the board is comfortable with the format as presented.
Okay.
This is just the format. We're gonna be, we're gonna be discussing on a bigger scale in, in future work sessions. But I didn't want to have, I didn't want to have a format that people weren't comfortable with to begin with. Like in this format right here, what I wanted to have was three years so you could see last year, this year, and next year. Alright? And then we can go down, we can start, next time we'll have a bigger chunk of the pie on, on these charts. This is just an initial case coming in to show you where I'm trying to go with giving the, the board an idea of where our budget's gonna be.
And I think that's great, sir. I did not, I just wanted to be clear because it's 4:30 and we're talking about $5,000. I'd rather be talking.
Just, this is again, a small, a small piece of the apple.
And I know that you're, hey, I know you're, you know, I know your department is huge. And this doesn't represent what your department does, I guess.
When you break down the entire agency, most people also forget other departments that fall within the agency. You know, we do have libraries, parks and rec, and senior services and extension and dotted line to elections. But we also have three landfills, two golf courses. But there's a lot with solid ways, keep cop beautiful. The agency is huge.
My point exactly, and I understand it's a test case, but, you know, if we have other agents, agency directors along with their initial or internal individual budgets, I would also like to see a line item that shows everybody that you have under you. There's, and maybe show the deficiency there. And when they come up and present, we'd have a heads up or something.
They will. They, trust me, they will be sharing with you their deficiencies.
This is actually perfect because since it is 4:30, if we'd have done what he wants to do, what time would we leave here?
About 8:30.
Yeah, there you are, so thank me. You'll see them. They're coming. Mr. Rod?
Yeah, I just, I mean, kind of on the same lines as some, what Bob's saying, Commissioner Weatherford. You know, the personnel services, we've already been told, we can't do any, really can't do anything about that. When I sat down with DOT about a month ago for the first time to kind of go through, what they did was we went around the room, each one of the nine, in, well, the divisions, not departments, but they did a brief overview of what they did. And then they told me how many people they were short and, you know, what it would take to kind of get back up to speed and then how much it would cost. Okay? You know, a brief little chart, like you said, about, you know, what did we do last year, this year? That's kind of nice to know, but the reality is, like, you know, we talked about, for example, in DOT with right-of-way maintenance and all that. It was really educational with Bill Sheldon sitting there saying, okay, you know, I've got nine different groups. These guys do asphalt, these guys do concrete, these guys do bridges, these guys do right-of-way. And you say, how many are short? He goes, well, I need this many here. And what's it gonna cost? And that was really insightful because, you know, we, these line items are nice, but I will tell you that just with the, the way DOT presented it that day, I walked away and I, I kind of got a real good feel for where they were short. Because then we can make the hard decisions of, like, you know, yeah, she has all those different things, but one area may be more important than another. And, and I, I found that really useful as a way to go through it.
If you add a large amount to somebody's budget in one year, you're gonna want to know why that is. And that's why this trend line is so important. If it's constant, no one's gonna issue, alright? It's okay, they've got a constant budget. But if you have a big jump, someone's gonna know, first of all, why, and secondly, where's the money coming from?
Well, but I, I think, I think when we, if we go through and look at all these budgets, I think you're gonna see that the county manager. I think you're going to see that the county manager has done a really good job. I don't think there's anybody in there that has a big jump over the last couple of years.
That's one way to make sure it doesn't happen, though.
And following your directions, Mr. Chair, we wanted to start with a smaller department. We're going to go to a much bigger department, maybe a small one with it. And we can do that. And we may have to go to more than one department in a work session at a time just to get through some of those. But we want you to make sure you understood the process.
Well, clearly they want more, so next month, you give it to them.
We will give them everything.
Yes. And also, in fairness, with Commissioner Weatherford being our liaison commissioner, that we already have a meeting scheduled with him to do exactly what you did with DOT. And that is for every department manager within public services to talk with him briefly about their budget needs so that he can advocate for the agency.
Again, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying, I don't need more. What I'm saying is, I know this is not what you, there's a whole lot more you do. To me, it seems like that's all you do. You just got this little bit amount of money and a great scheme of things.
Just me and Judith. Yes.
Ditto to everything that's shared. I'm just getting back to format, this is regarding format. Can you go back to the first slide?
Yeah.
I just want to scroll through yours. What was missing for me, even though it's helpful to see numbers, is context, maybe? And that's maybe what we're getting to. Like even what was shared, just a general description of your agency? An org chart, as Commissioner Ott was saying, number of people there? What are the issues? Like before you even get to them, what are the issues of this year? And then perhaps putting the numbers behind it so that we can flesh that out because it was difficult to understand what to do. No, I'm not saying it had, I'm just saying those minor things would be helpful.
Okay, are there other questions? Got one coming?
And what we'd like to do going forward, because I know once we get into some of the bigger departments, is those legal sheets, basically the department requests, I'd like to get to you in advance so you're not having to look at those at the meeting. We knew this was a small one, I think it's literally three sheets. But when we do parks, libraries, DOT, public safety, there's going to be a lot. So if you can get, if I can get those to you ahead of time, I'm just looking for a direction of how far in advance you'd like those. That way, if you have any questions about any specific lines, you'll have that information prior to the meeting. Because, I mean, you're, some of them, you're going to be talking stacks like this. And I know Commissioner Ott is directing me to email him rather than give him a paper copy. So if anybody else would like an electronic copy, I can provide that as well. But how far in advance would you like those? So you're comfortable with the material and that way, it's, you know, it's not going to be overwhelming to go through at the meeting because it's just not possible with some of the larger departments.
Can we have electronic?
Okay. Electronic for everybody? Okay, that's, that makes my life easier too, so I appreciate it.
Just for clarification, Commissioner Weatherford was addressing this. You are an agency director over many departments.
Yes.
So I guess I'd expected to hear stuff about libraries. Yeah, and I know, so you, do you present your budget independently of that? Are we expecting for them to provide us information generally to advocate for their own individual agency? Or do we just blanketly provide support for your agency which should cover those areas?
No. Each department's budget is presented by finance and their budget analysts to the county manager.
They each have their own own analysts for their departments?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So one of the, it was kind of difficult. One of the things we had tossed around was presenting the entire agency's budget, which we thought would be probably the better way to do it. But it's so voluminous that we then backed off and said, let's just do one and talk about process first, how the process works. And the process then can become, all right, this is how we get into the details of the bigger ones.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner, the way our budget processes work, those are departments and they have to have that approved budget. Now, Dr. McMorris or Eddie Cannon, they'll be involved in that budget process even before. I see it in a lot of cases. But in our process, it has to be approved that way. For instance, even in Dr. McMorris's budget, when she presented it and they met with me, I said, I approve this subject to funding. Be it whatever the board set at millage, whatever we set out of other fees when the millage was set and other revenues, we held everybody flat.
Does the agency, does she have to approve the individual department budgets before we see that? Or are they?
No, they, whatever they submit to her, you'll see too.
And my only suggestion, and I don't want to belabor the point, is that you have a large department. And if I was outside watching this on TV, I would think you have a very small department. And I would like a slide that shows all the agents that you have and maybe a bottom line of what the, what the budget is for each of those departments. I don't need volumes. Just want you to know, this is the budget that runs these departments.
Okay.
And these departments are thus, 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 and so. And that way it would be a lot more clear.
Yes, sir, we can do that. This is reflective of just my department administratively. Jackie McMorris and Judith Bowers, two people, small office, small budget. Not my managers, I'm sorry. But most of that is personnel, personnel, yeah. The operating budget, as you can see, is only 19.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you being the first one out. Six.
Dr. Gullig.
All right. Am I it? All right, well, then I'll wait quick. I figure everybody appreciates quick. Hi, I'm Dr. Gullig. All right, so I appreciate everybody here allowing me to talk to you about the planning phase for the new medical examiner's office. Give you a little background, we were built in 1983 and it was planned and sized for the current needs. In 1983, our population was about 33, 336,000 people. We had minor updates in 1998. We had another minor update in 2012 that increased our cooler size and added a covering, covered loading and unloading area. Because of the building construction, remodeling will be cost prohibitive. It's all cinder block, the roof is low, we can't raise it. And to be honest, we've got a number of problems with the current place. Medical examiner workload is directly population-based. Most of the time, death rates are stable within a population. We're over double the size than when it was built. There are modifiers, drug abuse, roadways, crime, community health. Cobb, fortunately, because of the good work of our law enforcement, our crime is relatively minor. We have several highly traveled roadways. We see quite a lot of motor vehicle-related fatalities. Unfortunately, our drug abuse is increasing. The opioid crisis that's receiving national attention has affected our caseload significantly. Paradoxically, our community is either very healthy or, and then unexpected deaths happen at older ages or they don't have access to healthcare and require the ME's office to be their doctor when they pass away. With the increasing popularity of my profession on the television, which most of it is made up, it skewed the public's perception of what we do. And in the process, it's created more complexity to our day-to-day work. When I present a case in court, they're expecting me to do what's done on TV. That's not how I work, but I have to be able to allay their fears that because I didn't use the latest WhizBang 9,000, I still am actually giving them a good work product. That being said, that opioid crisis we talked about has created some serious challenges. In the good old days, we had cocaine overdoses. Now we have U47700 overdoses. And there's one lab in the country that can test for it. So we're increasing our complexity at the same time we're increasing our caseload. I like graphs, graphs show things. This is our case data for the past five years. As a reminder, in September 2014, we had a transitional period until March of 2015 where essentially nobody was in charge. And then in 2015, at the end of March, beginning of April, I took over. What you can see here is a couple of important points. The bars represent the total number of examinations performed by the office. Red is complete autopsies, orange are limited autopsies, yellow are external examinations. On the slide underneath, you can see why we might choose one of those. There has been a significant increase in the caseload over the past five years. But more importantly, the number of autopsies performed by our, our office has more than doubled in the past two years. Fortunately, our number of external examinations have dropped considerably. That means our death certificate data is getting better. The health department appreciates that. Facility design is really an important part for accreditation. As I mentioned earlier, the current facility was designed using 1983 construction methods. To back up, in 1983, bloodborne illnesses like HIV and hepatitis C had not been recognized yet. Tuberculosis had not made a comeback. Chemical carcinogenesis, the idea that certain chemicals can cause cancer really wasn't that widely known. Radiology was complicated, required large processing areas and really wasn't available to a smaller office. And ergonomics just wasn't an issue in healthcare to realize to be of significant value. So older offices lack these safety features. As such, the current facility is deficient in some of the basic safety needs that cannot be retrofitted and are required for certification. The lack of these safety features can cause significant illnesses or injuries. My initial training was in an old office and respiratory protection became a real issue when one of our pathologists contracted tuberculosis from the process of doing an autopsy. Additionally, we like to have separated viewing areas for investigators. When law enforcement faces enough risk in their job that when they come to see an autopsy, they don't need to worry about getting tuberculosis or hepatitis C. But we do feel like their participation in the examination process is important for their education. It's important for our investigation. Our current space was designed, was not designed for two pathologists. Quite honestly, it's barely big enough for two people. It makes each case take longer, it decreases our throughput, the amount of cases we can do in a day. It's difficult to clean. Tile features prominently in 1983 construction methods. Anybody who owns a bathroom knows that grout is difficult to clean. It's porous. So our grout has 35 years of biohazardous materials. The lighting is terrible. The primary tool in an autopsy is my eye, eyes. Mine's a one, hers is two. Bad lighting makes it really difficult to identify things. We don't have directional light like surgical lights, so what we do is stand there with a flashlight and point it at things. If you've ever taken photographs indoors, you know the color doesn't come out quite right. Our photographic evidence is probably one of our most important work products. It's what gets shown in court. Without the natural light, to get good color correction, you don't get good quality photographs. And as it turns out, we're not mushrooms. We actually like to see the sun occasionally. We have really poor work surfaces. We actually only have one workstation. Everything else is either reclaimed tables from a hospital remodel or stuff from a dollar store. Our autopsy tables are old and quite honestly, most of them are broken. And we don't even have really a dedicated place to change clothes. If you come to visit us, you'll find the various staff members' clothing hanging in our public bathrooms. So where do we really need to go? So honestly, a modern autopsy room is a bright space with natural light. They have solid surface floors with drains, everything can be cleaned. It has workspaces for pathologists, for technicians. There is actually room to maneuver bodies on carts without hitting walls, ducts, people. The workspaces are ergonomic and safe, there's sufficient water and drainage. Radiography has become a really important part of a forensic autopsy. Most new facilities are adding CT scanners into their offices. Not asking for a CT scanner yet, yet. But they have shielded areas for X-rays and the advanced power requirements that are necessary. Garage space is really important. It's a day-to-day enhancement by providing a covered area for loading and unloading decedents, but it provides easily converted temporary workspace in a multiple fatality incident. So I think most of you have at some point seen the space we have in Cobb County. So the idea of a good morgue or laboratory space is foreign. I was actually fortunate enough to be always shown by the county manager what the facility in Charlotte looks like where I used to work. And I honestly think it was a truly eye-opening experience because it shows what an autopsy room should like, look like. So with that, what I want you to see with these next photographs is what I think about when I hear morgue. This is Manassas, Virginia. It's the northern office of the Virginia Medical Examiner System. They serve about two and a half times the number of people we do. They do about two and a half times the number of cases we do. Amazing how that works. This is what their new autopsy facility looks like. The autopsy room was built with five workstations. The office was completed in 2014. And because of the population boom in northern Virginia, it is already undersized. If you'll note, the high ceilings, besides the skylights, good photography requires a certain distance from your subject. Our people don't move from their tables, so we have to stand on ladders or scaffolds to do that. That's hard to do with a seven-foot ceiling. This is Baltimore, Maryland. Baltimore is the office of the chief medical examiner for Maryland. All the cases in Maryland go there. Baltimore is a great example of a high-volume office. Their throughput will be 20 to 40 cases a day. This is where Dr. Boggs trained. This is one of two identical autopsy rooms. If you'll note, above the workstations, you can actually see a viewing gallery for investigators or educational groups. Now, these prior to facilities are huge compared to what we have in Cobb. This is Washaw County, Nevada, Reno. Reno's population is 433,000. This is their brand-new facility, just opened within the past couple of weeks. Now, they do have a slightly increased workload because they contract with a few of the surrounding counties to do autopsies. But their facility is sized almost identically to what we would need. You'll note here that there's some natural light adding to the workstation being done through some light pipes coming in. But this is a modest-sized autopsy facility designed for our size. This is what's known as a special autopsy room. They're designed for infectious disease cases. You don't want to shut down your entire main autopsy because you're going to have to do somebody who has a communicable disease. They're used for decomposed cases, skeletal remains. They're also importantly serving as a redundant autopsy space. If you have to fix a plumbing problem in your main autopsy, you still can't stop for the day. So you've moved things into special and continue to work. This is Washaw County's special autopsy room. You'll note at no point does the word dark or cramped come into these descriptions. This is Lancaster County, Pennsylvania. Their population's 530,000, their construction was finished in 2012. You can see again, high ceilings, surgical lights over the workstation. This space is awesome compared to ours. It's actually too small for us. This is Charlotte, North Carolina. In the foreground, you actually see the surgical light that's used. That is the kind of high-quality light that's need to look into dark spaces to see what's in there. The other thing that you'll notice is in the background, up on the ceiling, there's a body lift. We get people who are substantially over the recommended allowable weight limit. And with those people, you still have to pick them up and look at them. You've got to look at their back, you've got to look at what's underneath them because you don't want to find out later that there was a bullet in there. So that, we actually installed thousand-pound body lifts so they, we had the capability of picking somebody up without having to use staff members so to prevent injuries. As far as investigator safety goes, this allows, viewing windows allow you to visualize the autopsy without actually being in the autopsy room. It means that an investigator or police officer can be there. There can be some education, they can see their case, but at no point do they have to come into the room where there's biohazardous risks. Now, when Baltimore did everything, they did it much bigger. They wanted to be able to use the space for some educational purposes, so they had a much larger viewing gallery. Advanced cooling is important. We have to monitor the temperature and humidity of our space. It has to be redundant to prevent failure. It has to be able to tell somebody if it did fail. The entire time the decedent's in our care, we are responsible for what happens to them. Allowing them to decompose because we had a cooler failure in the middle of the night and nothing, nobody knew about it is just not acceptable. This is Manassas. You can see the complicated electronics that self-monitor the cooler outside the door. You can also see there's two coolers in the view. This is Baltimore, the same deal, they have two coolers. They actually have more than two coolers, but they have two primary coolers. If one goes down, the other one's available. The inside of the cooler, this is our storage capacity. Storage capacity, including surge capacity, which means how many can you take at one time, is really important. time, is really important. You'll note that the cooling systems up on the ceilings are redundant, there are multiple, if one goes down, the cooler stays cool. The racks in these coolers are only used for long-term storage, the tables are used for daily cases. Last Monday, we had no space in our office. All it takes is one busy weekend, and we are out of space. This is also another cooler system. If you look in the foreground, the bariatric table that you'll see there, that table is designed to take somebody up to 1,000 pounds. The regular autopsy tables are only designed to 350 pounds. Unfortunately, those in our population who are excessively obese have a decreased lifespan and frequently end up becoming medical examiner cases, so we need the capability of handling and working with decedents who are up to 400, 500, 600 pounds. In the past three weeks, I think we've done four cases between 400 and 600 pounds. As we previously discussed, cover garage space is very important. It is our ancillary workspace in a disaster. This becomes extra morgue space, it's much cheaper than building extra morgue space. Along that back wall are dock-height doors which allow for refrigerated trucks to back up and provide surge emergency storage space. It also allows a covered space to recover somebody from a car, if the car is burned, decomposed individuals in a car. We can bring them on a rollback truck into the garage, unload, get them out of public view, and then do whatever needs to be done. It means the interstate can be, or roadway can be back in service faster for decomposed bodies, it means you don't have to do everything in some parking lot. It also prevents public view of high-profile decedents, we don't want to be the ones on the six o'clock news showing unloading some very high-profile individual from our truck. And it provides a drive-through for sort of routine staff, our routine daily tasks. Our office space is currently not sufficient to support where we need to be. We need to have co-located office space sufficient for the amount of staff we need to have. We're at the point where we need to transition to true 24/7 staffing, we don't need to have somebody going home on call and then spending all night working. For us, that's about 10 full-time investigators. A comparable name accredited jurisdiction usually has three pathologists for the size. We're already at the point we need at least half of a pathologist, they don't come in halves, they come in wholes, so we're about at a transition point. Because of the public interest in forensic medicine, we're a popular location for educational opportunities. The law enforcement citizens academies all like to, they are, we're one of their favorite stops, and we do provide citizens academies for I think every jurisdiction that has one in the county. Our current meeting space really isn't even enough to fit the grand jury in. So, what do we need to do? We've been working collaboratively with the county manager and with the property department. There is $3 million allocated in the 2016 SPOLOST. The county has already extended an RFQ for the first part of the project. That will consist of a needs assessment to determine what we need for a new facility. That will consist of some site planning, we will decide whether our current location is adequate, if our current location is not found to be adequate by the architects, then we will look to see if there is another location that will serve. And then they will prepare bridging documents for the purpose of bidding the next step. At that point, where we have the needs assessment and bridging documents, we will be able to do a detailed cost analysis, and property in the medical examiner's office will be able to bring to the board an actual cost for the project. Any questions? No death by PowerPoint, I didn't read my slides.
Excellent presentation, it was compelling. I think it was helpful to see the facilities of other areas to know the standard that you're trying to meet. I think it's helpful for us to know what type of investment we're going to have to make if we want to have a fully accredited organization. And I think you did a very good job of laying out what your needs, not only from a capital perspective, but from an operational perspective.
Thank you.
We've come a very long way from a few years ago when we really didn't know what was going on, and to now, you know, be comforted that someone's communicating with us what's going on in there is helpful, because, you know, this is not an issue until it becomes an issue.
Right.
And right now, you know, things are under the radar, but you've been planting seeds to let us know you don't want this to become an issue, and there are things that need to be addressed right away, and you've just did a very good job of laying that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with Mr. Cupid, a great job, and it's refreshing to have someone that knows what they're doing there, sir, so thank you very much. My one question, and I'm sure you, I don't want to hold you to it, but we have $3 million allocated, what do you really think something like that would cost to do something like Reno does?
More than $3 million.
That's kind of what I suspected. Well, I had to, because I know it's not enough, and we have the same issue with other SPOLOST projects for public safety and other things, and I suspect this was totally under-allocated again, so we need to figure out how to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Dr. Gull, it's very detailed and...
I'm glad you laughed, really. You laughed at my jokes, that's fantastic.
The business you're in, you have to have a sense of humor, right?
Absolutely.
There were jokes during that presentation?
There were. It's been a long day, you may not have been paying attention, it's okay.
A half a pathologist is what sent me over the edge to laugh. I wasn't laughing at you, I was laughing with you.
You laughed at the jokes, I was happy.
And we have talked, and I know we have another scheduled appointment coming up.
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing I would ask is that, looking at all these other facilities, I think gives us a good picture of what we, where we need to be, comparable to size or population or number of cases that they do a year versus what we do a year. I'd like to make sure that that's comparable, and even in population size or similar. But also, I'd like to see that they, the ones that we're looking at are all accredited.
Every one of those offices is name-accredited with the one exception of Charlotte, they're in the process.
Okay. But they're moving forward?
Yes, they are.
Thanks.
Great presentation, thank you. And there's two things that kind of stick in my mind, you know, having been there with you. What you didn't see in any of these slides is how the two of them are making this work. Okay, their facilities are, I mean, I wish, the only thing that would have changed on your presentation is you should have put a picture of ours up there, because it would have been embarrassing.
I really didn't want to show that.
Well, but I think it really would have driven home what the two of you worked to make it work. I mean, when, you know, the day I was there, we had three, and we had to kind of move around the room to move the bodies around, and just to kind of get one over to where we want to do X-rays or whatever, you had to kind of, it was like, you know, musical chairs moving everything around. And the second thing is, I don't think anybody really understands also the communicative diseases that you deal with, and, you know, yeah, we had the air packs on and whatever, but the rest of the facility, I mean, there is no way that that building is going to keep somebody from getting sick if we're not careful. And so I think those two things, but, you know, I commend the two of you for the job you do with the facilities.
Thank you.
All I'm going to say is, on day one, I was in your office.
Yes, you were.
So you know where I'm coming from.
Absolutely.
Thank you, that's a great presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Honorable County Clerk.
Okay, I promise mine won't be as interesting as his. So joining me today is Debbie Blair with the county attorney's office, this is kind of a two-part process. My office, so my office is responsible for maintaining the records and the history of the board appointments, but we couldn't get to that point without the help of the county attorney's office, because what people are looking for are often things that my staff cannot answer. So what we're maintaining is how long their term is, when they're set to expire, that type of thing, and hopefully within the next few months, we'll have a better tool available to us through our automated agenda software to allow us to track that better, to make it easier for y'all to track that better. But in the meantime, what we've done is worked with the county attorney's office, they provided us with a guide that we have been using for the past year, the commission assistants are using these guides to help us make sure that we're following the processes, the board appointments are in place as they should be. So the guide was prepared by the county attorney's office, and what they gave us, one of the biggest questions that y'all ask us is, does it require an announcement, does it require a vote? So we've put together as a part of that guide so that it, we've got quick glances that we can look in when the commission assistants get ready to do their agenda items, so they know going in, do they require the announcement, or does it require a full board approval? Debbie also prepared background information, so when they're putting those agenda items together, they're not having to reinvent the wheel, they can go to this quick guide, pull their background information, and then complete the agenda item, because it is, especially as we just went through with Commissioner Ott, Chairman Boyce, and Commissioner Cupid, it's a lot of appointments at one time. So this hopefully will ease those transitions as we go through. The next slide, we have all of the boards that require announcements, those are where the board, the commissioner gets to announce their appointment, it doesn't require any type of vote. There's a couple of exceptions to that, especially on the airport advisory board, there's a pilot member, and then that is a full board appointment, so there are some exceptions to those. The next slide is all of the boards and authorities that do require an approval. And so the agenda items are done the same, we just want to make sure we capture it correctly in the minutes so that we know and have our records correct when someone's looking back through those. So Debbie's going to come in and she's going to go forward a little further in the process to kind of look at what our boards and authorities, how they're mandated, state law versus things that were created on a county level. Hey there, Debbie Blair. The next slide here lists the boards and authorities that are required by state law. So we as a county have no, we can't do anything with it, we've got to have these specific boards. There is also several boards and authorities that are Cobb-created, so at the discretion of the board, you can make changes to that, to those boards and authorities, change the makeup of it, or eliminate it if that is something that the board considered. We were asked to put together this information to look at how effective boards are, and actually, that's the wrong term, are the boards meeting as they are being requested? You all take a lot of effort and appoint folks, and are they doing what you all think that they should be doing? This slide here and the next slide, we had somebody go back and poll the various boards, and this information is a couple of years old now, it was done in 2015 for the period of 2014, 2015. So when you look at this slide here, for example, the airport advisory board, they have had 12 meetings out of 12 required meetings, and then in parentheses is what is required by, when you all created the board, how you set up the meeting schedule. So if you look through there, sometimes it's twice a month, sometimes it's monthly, sometimes it's just as needed. But if you look at the, like, 12 for 12, so they've met every single time that they were supposed to. Going down, the Cherokee-Cobb Joint Development Authority, they met once and they should have met eight times. Now they're only a quarterly, they only have to meet quarterly, but they only met once in the two-year period prior to the poll being done. Board of Trustees of the Witness Fee Fund, zero meetings in 24 months, but again, they only have to meet as needed, and evidently, there was not a need. Electrical Advisory Board, zero meetings, again, an as-needed board. And then this is the balance of the boards that the county created, that you all can make any changes to if you so desire. And again, let's see, the advisor, the Heating and Air Conditioning Advisory Board, again, an as-needed meeting, but they did not have to have any meetings during that period. Same with the Plumbing Advisory Board. Most of the other boards on that screen met pretty much as they were required to meet. But again, we're just kind of here putting the information out there, so you all can discuss and talk about how you want to proceed with the boards. Again, it's not a legal requirement that any of the boards with, that were created by Cobb County exist, it's up to you all to decide how they should exist.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and thank you, ladies, great job. And, you know, as you probably have found out, when I first started, I had some 42 appointments to go through and look at, and my question was, do we need these, what do they all do, et cetera, et cetera? And then Commissioner Ott and I started working together and had an intern go gather some of this data a couple of years ago, and as you can see, it's pretty telling. And I think that it's something that we as a board, we have a lot to do, and I think if we don't need it, or they're not meeting, I don't want to spend the time appointing somebody, and if I appoint somebody, or we appoint somebody, and then they don't meet for two years, then what kind of interest does that show, and what value is it of to the county or to that person that's volunteering their time? So that was my thrust and still is my concerns, and I think that if you look at this, there's a good majority of these we probably don't need, and I'd like to work toward that. One question I do have, on the handouts you gave us, unless I'm missing colorblind, you said propose disbanding little to no activity, and like, Cobb Beautiful met 20 and 24 months, that you have it yellow. So I'm just a... Well, I'm special, apparently.
Did you give them the...
No, I know you got that.
I had emailed it to you, and you didn't give them that.
I believe, I believe someone...
We'll download it. We haven't been in our office all day for something.
The assistants have those. I emailed them out to the assistants, but I think what you have, Commissioner Weatherford, might be the results.
Of the survey data that we did? I mean, because I requested it.
Okay, but you emailed us the list, emailed us this presentation to do that, or just the list?
No.
No, we emailed the guide out to the commission assistants, and the commission assistants have actually been using that data for the past year, so it's been in place, we've just spent a long time coming on the presentation.
Well, I like copy of the presentation.
Send us the presentation, and we'll work off that.
Okay, I hate to bring up a sore subject, but where are we with Board Tracker in conjunction with this list?
We had worked, before I came into the office, the office had been working with Information Services to get a new board management system in place. So when I came into the office, one of the things that I was asked to do was also put in, move forward with an electronic agenda process. So what we found as part of that research is that it's all part of the same system, that they can offer the same thing, and have one vendor that provides that service. So we are actually in the RFP process with that currently, and we actually did our first demo on Friday, Commissioner Ott sat through it, the commission assistants sat through it with us, and it's all part of a component that is going to be very automated, so that when we have our agenda items, it all works together, it all gets put on our website as part of our portal, instead of it going from our information that's not very automated to another department to upload to the website, it'll all be integrated, and I think it will clear up some of those issues where we see things that don't get updated as they should.
Okay, and then, once that is accurate, we need to communicate with the webmaster, because some of the boards have old members that, whose term expired years ago and who have been replaced, but it still lists the old board members.
Yes, and I've actually been working with communications, actually just worked with them this past week, I went through all of the new appointments that we just had this past year, and we made sure that everything that was, everybody that was done was updated. Then we also found that sometimes when they're updated, maybe the other person isn't taken off, so our boards were not reflective of that. So as soon as we hear about it, we're trying our best to make sure that those boards are cleared up, but with the, when we go to a new automated system, which hopefully will be sooner rather than later, it won't have to go to communications for us to update the information. And I'm not saying that there's, the issue's not just with communications, it's just we've got information, we're transferring it over, but once it becomes under one system, it will automatically be updated, and you won't have to worry about that. So as soon as I put in a new name and it replaces... So as soon as I put in a new name and it replaces somebody, that comes off, so you don't have those lists that are not reflective of the current board.
Okay, and for any of these that are board appoint, well, they're all board-appointed, but I mean, if they have a change in their bylaws, which changes their meeting requirement, are you notified? Or does it come to us for approval first, and then it goes to you or what?
Sometimes I have very little communication with the actual boards once they're established. I mean, we've got bylaws that are in there, but honestly, I have very little communication with the boards once they're established. Ours, most of the communication I have is with the board appointments, the actual agenda items to put the board members in place.
Okay, for example, the Neighborhood Safety Commission, they don't, that's a two-year period, meeting monthly, correct? 24 meetings. They don't meet in July or December. So that, and that's reflected, I'm pretty sure, in their bylaws because I was on that board when that happened. So we really need to update that kind of stuff, too.
Okay.
Because it looks like they're not meeting their requirement when, in essence, that's not their requirement.
So they're changing the amount of meetings that they have? No.
They don't meet in July because it's summer, and they don't meet in December because of the holidays. So when it was established, it probably was monthly. But they, as a board, they, as a board, have changed their bylaws to reflect that change. And then, it's my understanding that it comes back to this board for approval, once they make, once their board votes on it.
Well, I was going to say, we're going to have to look at how it was established, the tool that created it. I mean, because if we're changing the amount of meetings and things like that, then it needs to be, then you all do need to know about it, and we need to be, our information needs to be reflective of the, what they're actually doing. Okay.
Ms. Rock?
All right, first to that issue. My intern was the one that kind of get all these numbers. I don't think she looked at the bylaws. So I think that all she did was say that they meet 24 times in two years. So I don't believe that they changed the bylaws. I think that she just made an assumption, she didn't know about the July and December. I think the other thing, and this is something Commissioner Weatherford and I talked about, just because a group meets 22 out of 24, even if they meet 24 out of 24 times, some of these boards are not needed. Because I, what I would like to see is, and I know this is on the webpage, but a brief description about what each board does, or significant things that they have done over the last two years. Because some of them, they meet every month regularly, but they don't do anything, or they haven't accomplished anything, or they haven't accomplished what they were intended to accomplish. And I think that that's almost more important than whether or not they meet. Because if you look at these numbers, almost everybody's met, you know, 90% of their meeting requirements, but there's just, there's way too many boards that are not, I don't think they're really doing anything.
Yeah, and also, just to piggyback on that, several of the boards also give us a report of their accomplishments through the year, or like Neighborhood Safety, for example, gives us a chairman's report, and the chairman of that board sends us not only the attendance of all the members, so we can see who's not participating, but also the projects that they have accomplished through the year, like the panel discussions that they have quarterly in this room, the elderly abuse task force, different things, projects that they've done in the chairman's report. And, you know, the SPOLOST Oversight Committee also gives us an attendance report and things like that. So, I mean, I hate to create more work for volunteers that are giving us their time, but the reports are helpful and the attendance.
One of the things, and one of the things we saw on Friday when we saw the demo for the e-agenda, actually, it allows the different boards to take attendance. It would allow them to have agendas that we would all be able to see. So all those kind of things are incorporated into this e-agenda software that we saw a demonstration of last week. So besides giving the minimal stuff that we have right now, there's actually a whole lot more information, and it doesn't really require a lot of extra work. It actually would be helpful to the boards.